The May 25th regular meeting of the Fairfield Board of Education is called to order. We have Ms. Rotelli, Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Pickbow, Mrs. Gerber, myself, Mrs. Vitale, Superintendent Cummings, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Max and Cannelly, Mr. Peterson, and Ms. Guernsey. Ask you to all please rise. Ms. Rotelli, will you lead us in the pledge, please? Hello, everybody. I hope everyone is enjoying this nice spring weather. It's nice to see everybody. We're going to move right on to call in public comment. Do we have Ms. Kayler on the line?
Hi, this is Phoebe Kayler.
Hi, can you just state your name and address for the record? And then you can give your comment, and public comment's limited to two minutes.
Okay, my name is Phoebe Kayler. My address is 151 Sasse P. Quan Rose in Fairfield, 06824. I have written a letter that I would like to read for my public comments. Dear Board of Ed members, thank you for putting the Math Academy on the agenda. This program has made an incredible difference in my son's elementary school education, socially, emotionally, and academically. Before entering this program, he did not want to go to school. Despite his academic prowess, he felt frustrated and alone. The gifted classes he had were the highlight of his week, however, these were limited in time and scope. Learning amongst like-minded children changed my son's attitude towards school and about himself. The gift of this Math Academy extends beyond his learning three years of math in two years. At the academy, he found an academic and social home. These children liked learning and discussing myriad subjects at high levels. For the past two years, my son was in a carpool with two other children. Driving them to and from school was a treat as I had the pleasure of learning, of listening to their conversations. These three children could not be more different, but they all have the love of learning in common, and from this show tremendous respect for each other inclusive of their social differences. Both academic barbells of our Fairfield students qualify as special needs. My other son has had the benefit of an IEP since he was identified with learning differences in third grade. I thank the Board of Education for having a deep systemic program in place to help my son and others like him. I ask you to please empathize with and physically and systematically support the students on the other end of the spectrum by voting to keep the Math Academy in place. It is a successful program without equal law or trend. Without the Math Academy, there is no advanced academic offering for these students until middle school, where the only option is to move ahead in math. True academic advancement is not broadly offered until high school. Waiting until a child is 14 or 15 years old wastes many productive intellectually curious years, potentially missing the critical time to academically connect with a student. It is my understanding of the Math Academy...
Ms. Kayler, I'm sorry to cut...
...that possibly could be budget neutral.
I'm sorry to cut you off, but you've reached your two minutes, but if you can just email your letter to the Board email address, we will include that with the record of this meeting. And I thank you for calling in. I'm sorry I had to cut you off, but we just, I hope you understand, we have to keep everybody to the same amount of time. Thank you. Next caller, Ms. Kern. Rebecca Kern.
Hi, yes, Rebecca Kern, 430 Vernon Hill Road. I first want to start off by thanking the Board of Ed for putting this back for discussion, but I more want to thank you all for thinking outside of the box. The Math Academy has been an alternative program that has been needed clearly for many years. I feel that the Math Academy does fulfill the requirement of special needs because special needs is a full spectrum of needs. My daughter, Baylor, started the Math Academy. She was the first Math Academy, one of the first Math Academy students. We were guinea pigs in this program, and I had no idea how life-changing this program could be. This program has been wildly successful. Every single parent I have talked to who has participated feels the same way. I do feel that you have educationally fulfilled my child, which I do believe is a responsibility of the Board of Education. And our ask is this, or my ask is this: Until the Board of Education can figure out a clear systemic path to create a program like this throughout the elementary schools, please do not end a program that is wildly successful and that is fulfilling the needs of our children. They are finally being challenged, and they are finally feeling like school is where they should be, and they are with the people that they should be learning with. We ask that you keep this program in place, and I myself would offer any information and support in how we could make this systemic throughout the elementary schools, because I do, I do understand that need as well, but that is not in place right now, and this is a minimal-cost program comparative to other programs that are in place for children with special needs. That is why it should be part of the special needs program, and we just ask that you keep this in place and help continue to foster this program and parallel towards a bigger systemic program.
Thank you, Ms. Kern. Thank you. Thank you for calling in. Next caller, Alex Fuchs.
My name's Alex Fuchs. I live at 240 Wilson Road. Hello, my name is Alex Fuchs, and my teacher is Mr. Henkel. I've come here today to talk about the Math Academy. The Math Academy is a very controversial subject, and I stand on the side of keeping it, as do all of my classmates. One morning, my parents informed me of the cutting of the Math Academy, and I was extremely upset for the rest of the day. Why, I thought, did they remove it? Everyone in my class enjoyed it. The Math Academy teachers, Mr. Henkel and Mrs. McCoy, enjoyed teaching it. The students in other classes showed no sign of jealousy or hostility towards those in it. What was the problem? At school that day, I shared the issue with my class. We decided to ask. A group of students made a website, and others designed to save the Math Academy posters. I made a petition, presented it to both Math Academy classes, which every single kid signed. We all agreed the Math Academy wasn't a problem. We recently took the Iowa assessment, in which most of us answered more than 50 of the 60 questions, indicating we knew most, if not all, of them, thanks to the Math Academy's progressive learning. And one of the best parts of the Math Academy is being with kids I feel comfortable learning with. Normally, I would feel uncomfortable being the first to understand a new lesson. I always finished my work in less than half the time it took the other kids. I wasn't challenged and was often bored after I finished all my work. Nowadays, things are very different. As the math is accelerated by a year, we learn more topics and go faster, so I'm always challenged. I always love that I get to work with other students who get the math as quickly as I do. We push each other to do the best we possibly can. The Math Academy is a wonderful, wonderful program. Everyone who's going through it agrees. While there are a few minor problems with it, the effects it's caused in my life has been incredibly amazing. To those who oppose it, I urge you to rethink your decision, and to those standing with me, thank you so much for all of your support in saving the program.
Thank you for your call. Next caller, Anya Sharma.
Hello?
Hello, can you just state your name and your street address for the record?
Hello, my name is Anya Sharma, and I live on 520 Queens Grant Road, Fairfield, Connecticut. And I'm currently in the Math Academy fourth grade, and I was very disappointed to hear that the Math Academy program would be closing. Even though in third grade I had the best teacher, she was kind of busy helping the other kids who needed more help, and I was never that challenged. But in Math Academy, all my friends have similar interests and learn at similar, at a similar pace. Even though I'm challenged in Math Academy, I'm definitely learning at a faster pace than I was at my homeschool. Lastly, my little sister, who's in kindergarten, is pretty good at math for her age, and I'm kind of sad that she won't get a chance to be in the Math Academy program. I request you please consider to keep the Math Academy open. Thank you.
Thank you for calling in. The next caller, Jennifer De La Rentes.
Jennifer is not on the call right now?
Next caller, Edward Vergara.
Hello, this is Ed Vergara from 271 Old Post Road in Fairfield. You hear me?
Okay, you can give your comment. We're giving two minutes for public comment, so the floor is yours.
Very much for putting it on the agenda. I just wanted to echo some of the things other people have said, and to say that from our perspective, the academy was not a perk in any way, but really something that met the need we didn't realize our son had. Prior to the Math Academy, it wasn't so much that he, our son was bored, but he was really genuinely struggling with school. We sort of didn't understand what the problem was, and he's now thriving, and most importantly, I have every reason to think that it will stick because the Math Academy inspired in him of a love of learning and a love of just intellectual challenge. I also think it's, the Board should, should take a, that even in a, in a sort of more rigid financial analysis, that the Board should think about the investment that goes into the, to the Math Academy and the fact that people have spent a lot of time and effort putting it together. It's very young. We don't know what the long-term effect is going to be, what, what impact these kids are going to have on others around them as time goes on. I can tell you that even though this is anecdotal and just relating to our son, you know, he picked up a different set of interests as he was in the academy. It really affected, you know, what he was, what he thought was cool and, and such. He became interested in puzzles, riddles, logic games, and, and the thing that I noticed that was so interesting to me is that that, that interest, that set of interests spread to his broader group of friends. You know, he has a very diverse group of friends, you know, some, you know, all over the map, and, and all of that stuff, you know, it's all lying around the house, all are puzzles or games or whatever, and I see that all those other kids, you know, sort of, it just sort of spread. And I think that, you know, promoting academic excellence, you know, it's not going to be limited to this group of kids. It's something that is going to benefit the, the learning environment as a whole in our schools and promote excellence generally, and I think that it would be wise, it'd be unwise not to allow that to develop and see what impact it has on our, on our learning environment more and more broadly. Okay, so strongly hope you guys can keep it. Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you for calling. Next caller. Thank you, timekeeper. Caroline Steber.
Caroline Steber and Phoebe Kayler are not on the line currently.
Yes, Phoebe Kayler actually was our first caller, so we're set. Okay. Thank you. That ends public comment. If anybody's listening and would like to give any public comment on agenda items, once again, you can email us at publiccomment@fairfieldschools.org, or submit your comment on the public comment form that is posted on the Board of that website along with our agenda. So we are going to be moving along, and I'm going to ask the Board's unanimous consent just to change the order of the agenda to move the approval of the Roger Sherman Building Project as complete forward. We have the Chair, Mr. Lang, here, so seeing, oh, seeing no objection. Mr. Lang? And for the Board, the recommended motion, the Board of Education accept the Roger Sherman Building Project, State Project 051-0150 as complete, kind of a motion. Mrs. Gerber, a second. Ms. Rotelli. Thank you, Mr. Lang, for joining us tonight. I believe, is Mr. Morabito also on the phone?
Yes, I am.
Hi, Sal, thank you for joining us. So I asked Mr. Lang just to come before the Board to answer any questions and just give us a final update on the project. Thank you, to start, for, for chairing this committee and for all of your work on behalf of Sherman and our school district. And the floor is yours.
There we go. All right. Hello, and thank you for having me this evening. My name is Eric Lang. I'm the Chairman of the Phase Three of the Roger Sherman Building Committee. Over the course of the past two and a half years, we have been working to implement the Ed Spec as you've written it, and I'm here tonight to request your acceptance of the project as complete. The project was mainly executed in two phases over the course of the previous two summers. In 2019, we executed the site work, which included a reconfiguration of the, the bus loop and the addition of three parking spaces to the parking lot at the front of the building, as well as some electrical work that was needed to be done to implement the installation of the new air conditioning system in the building. In the winter of 2020, we awarded the contract for the second phase of work, which was a new fire sprinkler system in the building, some associated upgrades to the fire alarm, and the installation of the aforementioned air conditioning system. The project was just getting underway when the schools were shut down for COVID, which created some challenges, but also created some opportunities. The contractors were able to phase the work into two shifts, a daytime shift and an evening shift, allowing the tradesmen to work safely amongst themselves and limit the overall number of contractors in the school. And as such, they were able to complete the majority of the work in time for the first day of school in the fall of 2020. Over the course of the last few months, we have been working on tying up loose ends, getting to substantial completion, and getting all of the approvals from the, the town and the various agencies, savin' jurisdiction over the project. So to the point where we just finally received the final CFO last week. So with that, you know, I and the rest of the committee believe that the project is complete, and we request your acceptance of it as so. Any questions?
Thank, does anybody have any questions?
Could I just interrupt for one second?
Yes, Mr. Asa.
Apparently, there is no sound on Channel 78. They're getting video, but for anyone watching on Cablevision, they are not being able to hear us at all. It is available via the WebEx or through the Town website livestream, Fair TV. So if anybody's out there and can share that on some social media pages that can hear us now, that would be greatly appreciated. This is being recorded, so it will be available, but there is a technical difficulty at the moment where Channel 78, no one can hear us.
Thank you, Ms. Teresa, for that update.
I'd also like to add, I apologize, I can't hear you clearly, when that mic, maybe it's a little off.
All the way.
All right, is that better? All right.
Thank you. Any questions? No?
No.
Mr. Morabito, is there anything else that you would like to add?
No, I also lost the audio for a portion of the Chairman's speech update, but everything is complete, and we are happy with the work.
Do you have, in terms of budget and the FEMA cap?
Yes, so we came in...
I do not have that, I believe. The Chairman has that?
I do. Overall, we came in both under the FEMA cap and under the overall budget by about $117,000. We went into the project with a contingency of 513, which we had used for really just a handful of items over the course of the construction, mainly electrical and some general cost overruns from the initial contract.
Seeing, before we take it to a vote, I asked the Chair if we can maybe arrange a visit over the next, either this, this, end of this school year, or maybe the beginning of next school year, just to see the new lockers. I know Ms. Jacobson especially. She is a Sherman grad family and is very excited about the new lockers, and of course, whenever our school gets air conditioning, it is always a good day and something to celebrate. So thank you again for your work, and with that, we'll take it to the Board for a vote. All in favor that the Board of Education accept the Roger Sherman Building Project, State Project 051-0150 as complete? All in favor? Motion carries 9-0. Thank you, Mr. Lang, and please extend our thanks to the rest of the building committee. It's been a pleasure working with you. I was the representative for that committee. Unfortunately, I missed a lot of the meetings because their meetings conflicted with our Board of Ed meetings, but it really was a pleasure working with you.
Likewise, thank you.
Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving back to old business. Approval of Superintendent's recommended 2001-2022 budget adjustments. That the Board of Education approved the Superintendent's recommended 2021-2022 budget adjustments as enclosed. Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Ms. Max and Cannelly. Before we take it to the Board, Mr. Cummings, let's give the floor to you.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. Mike Cummings, Superintendent. I, we had a couple of questions on the Math Academy, and I'm going to have Dr. Savicancic come up and address those in a second, but before he does, I want to just take a minute of the moment of the Board's time, Public's time, to address some of the concerns that have come up, and really the timeline around the Math Academy. So when, when the budget was presented to the Board for consideration in January, we had reduced the Grade Four Math Academy position at Holland Hill with an expectation and understanding that we would be able to complete the necessary work to integrate the Math Academy, excuse me, Math Academy curriculum expectations into the other 10 elementary schools. We were not able to meet that expectation due to the other demands placed on staff in response to the pandemic and the different school learning models we had to go through. So that, as a result, that work did not get accomplished, and as a result of that, I am proposing that the Grade Four Math Academy be included with the budget adjustments the Board is making tonight. I do understand the concern that I did not bring this to the Board in my initial proposal on May 11th, two weeks ago. That's a very fair concern. I will tell you that, that around that time, the beginning of May, the number of voices internally within the district, the educators who work with the Math Academy, Mr. Wakeman and others, began to express concerns around our ability. We had been meeting fairly regularly through the spring, getting updates on the progress of disseminating the program to other schools, but around that beginning of May, it became more and more clear that that was not going to be possible. I was asked at the May 11th meeting about the need to continue the program, and I answered that, that question with the transparency I try to bring to all of our, our meetings, and that was essentially that I was concerned about it. I was concerned about our ability to support the needs of those students without the program being in place. And so I, as I stated then, and in further conversations in the last couple of weeks, I've solidified my support for reinstating this position. As I've previously stated, in every time I've been asked to talk about a budget, I firmly believe that a budget must express the values of the students and community it serves. Our inclusion of the Grade Four Math Academy position in, in this proposal reflects that in 21-22, this is the best method to meet those needs. It will provide direct instruction for the students, and it will provide us the necessary time to support the Grade Four teachers in the district to adopt the math practices and curriculum necessary. So what I, I put forward here is that we add the Grade Four position for next year, knowing that in the subsequent year, we would be supporting the Grade Five position as well, the students move up, but it would be our commitment that the position would end, the Grade Four position, excuse me, would end in the 21-22 school year in order for us to bridge the gap in support for those students. I want to be clear that the program, as it migrates back to the 10 schools, will look different than it does at Holland Hill. I am not in favor of extending a leveled math class to Grade Four and Five students throughout the district. I think that the number of students that, we have a fairly consistent number of students who are being identified for this program over the past three years, and as it goes back into the 10 schools, we have to come up with an alternative learning model to support them. So it will look different. I want to be really clear about that in terms of setting expectations, but it would be our, again, it would be our expectation that in 22-23, Grade Four students would be supported in their home schools for their math learning needs. So before I ask Dr. Savicancic to report on some specific questions, if there's any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them now. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Superintendent Cummings? Mr. Peterson?
I actually have several questions. I wonder if, you have to let me know if they're more appropriate for Dr. Savicancic. By the way, thank you. I spoke with you earlier today, briefly, but, but constructively about the Math Academy, and I appreciate you taking, carving a few minutes of your time out of your, out of your You know, I've gone back to the January comments that you made from, in the, in the budget, in our budget hearing. You know, and at the time, I was surprised that it was administration that was pushing this to be removed from the budget, and in fact, it was not in the budget that we passed and was not reflected in the final budget passed by the RTM. And so you're, you're saying that this was brought up, the idea of returning it to our budget originated with you?
That's absolutely correct, Mr. Peterson.
All right. Several of the comments that you made in January concerned me and reflected concerns that I've had about the program for some time. You were talking about, you know, you had enrollment increase in the program, had students who were not able to attend due to transportation or other issues. If there's no program being extended to the elementary schools for the 21-22 school year, where do they, where do they fit in? The kids who might qualify for the Math Academy program, but for one reason or another, are remaining in their home elementary schools?
Excuse me, over the last two years, excuse me, I think about 40 students have been identified each year for the Math Academy. The enrollment has increased, but we've not come anywhere close to reaching a class size of 25 due to parent decisions not to send their children to Holland Hill for the program. Those students who do not attend have received regular instruction in their home schools, and, and as, as you know, and we've talked about before, they still have the opportunity to test up in math entering Grade Six, when they get to Grade Six.
Quite right.
So they're getting the, the regular Grade Four and Grade Five math curriculum.
But, but if they're, if they've been identified through this process as having special needs, why aren't we delivering special needs at the elementary level?
We have not done anything specific to support those students. I believe they might get some support from the MST's in the building, but they've, the program we offer is the Math Academy, and when they elect not to do that, we don't provide an alternative service.
This, this is, this has been a recognized issue since we started the Math Academy. I think what this is, is this the third year of Math Academy? So...
This is the second year. We're in the, we're currently the second year.
Okay. Has, has no curriculum work been done at the elementary level to more closely segment to these, these kids who, for reasons that, you know, it's not simply, may not simply be a parent choice. It may be some kind of conflict that they have.
There has been no other work done. Well, there's been, I would say, there's the type of typical, typical curricular adjustments that are made during the course of a year, pacing things and things like that, but nothing specific for these students.
All right, so in January, you also said, I mean, you were, you were very clear. I wrote down a lot of your comments because I thought, I thought that they were pretty insightful, talking about, you know, that the Math Academy is not actually a solution to the problem that we have. The Math Academy was a pilot program, you know, kind of aimed at trying to figure out what we can do in the intermediate, in the near term for instruction for these, for these kids. I'm a little disappointed that, I think it's been seen for a long time that this is not a long-term solution. What it seems is though no curriculum work has been done with, with the, with the long-term ending of the program in mind. program in mind. Now, I guess I would ask, how long would it take, do you think, to do that work? And is that something that could be done over the summer?
I want to clarify, the curriculum work for the Math Academy students, Math Academy program was done.
Fair enough. That's a fair point.
So, essentially, those students are getting three years of math in two years. The dissemination, distribution of that curriculum into the other 10 schools with the existing classroom structures that we have in place in those other 10 schools is the current issue. So, the ability to group by ability at a level like this, you know, essentially, under 25 students in both grades of four and five, is only able to happen because of the centralization of the program. If we take 40 students and distribute them across 11 schools, roughly four students per school, we would have staffing issues around how to support those students. First of all, I think we've recognized, we've all recognized, as we hear from parents and students, that one of the distinguishing features of the Math Academy is the full-day program immersion for these students together. It's not a special, it's not even grouping by math for an hour a day. And the ability to be together for that length of time. To take that out now to 10 different sites really presents the logistical challenges that we've not been able to address yet, which is, how do we provide that level of support? How do we staff that? Are we going to be, you know, and we've looked at, these are all conversations that have evolved over the course of, not just this past spring, but really over the last year. Are we going to be looking at some type of pull-out program, some type of before-after-school program? These are all the options that we look at. As you can imagine, each of these has potential costs as well. And we've just not come down to yet a conclusion that we're comfortable with about how to best support those students.
And your timeline, your best timeline is that work could not be done prior to the 22-23 school year?
That's correct.
All right. I'll leave that for now. Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Pitko?
I'm not sure to address this to Mr. Cummings or someone else. Can you just refresh my memory? How exactly are these students identified? What's the process for them to get into this Math Academy?
I don't know. Dr. Savicancik, did you have that detail?
Good evening. James Savicancik, Executive Director of Instruction Curriculum and Assessment. There is a weighted formula. It has not been the same weighted formula for the past two years. There's currently 11 different indicators that are, sorry. There are currently 11 different indicators that are looked at. Some of them are weighted with more weight than other indicators to get to a final score and decide if a student...
Okay. So, is this a team of people that make this decision? Or is it come from their teacher who teaches the math, the administrator in the building?
So, our two program directors for math look at the data in its totality. But each teacher does give scores as well as standardized assessments, as well as classroom ones as well.
I'm not very good with my words. I'm going to try to find a way. This is a question for Mr. Cummings. So, when we, in our district, identify a student who now isn't given the right to specialized instruction, shouldn't we be providing that to all students who are identified?
We do give them the right. They have an option not to take it.
And is the only option we know of right now is that they don't choose to leave their neighborhood school to go to Holland Hill?
That's correct.
Any other questions for Mr. Cummings or Dr. Savicancik? Mrs. Gerber, follow up to Ms. Rotelli?
Yeah, I guess one thing I just want to, if you could refresh my memory, what is the minimum number of students that we would take for a class?
I believe we were using the number 15.
Okay. So, if 15 students chose not to, let's just say for the sake of argument, that tonight, it's decided that we will continue to offer a fourth-grade Math Academy next year, and if 14 students show interest, it will not happen?
That's correct. That's the number. I'll have to double check, but I believe that's the number we decided upon two years ago with the board.
Okay. And so, let's just say again, for the sake of argument, if it were to continue on after tonight's meeting, how quickly would that process move? I mean, it's May 25th right now.
We are ready to, if we get, if this is included in the board's adopted budget tonight, we're ready to move on this starting tomorrow morning.
Okay. And so, if that happened, what would the deadline be by which you would say we need to have, know if 15 students want to do this?
We are planning, and if we would plan, we have on the books, again, if it's needed, a parent information meeting this Thursday evening. We would ask parents to commit by the middle of next week.
Okay. So, by the middle of next week, that would be June 2nd?
Yes. June 2nd or 3rd. I forget which of those two.
So, then basically, you would then know by next Wednesday whether or not there were 15 students who were going to be in the Math Academy if that were, in fact, approved tonight?
Right. It's a very similar timeline to when the program was started because, again, two years ago, it wasn't, didn't start till after the board's final budget adoption. We'd also know if we had more than 25. The last two years, we've not had to run a lottery, but if we had more than 25, we'd have to run a lottery, as was discussed when the program was adopted.
So, I guess then my question is, so already now, there are third-grade teachers who have in mind students that they want to recommend for this?
At this point, it's third-grade teachers. It's also the data information that Mr. Wakeman has collected.
Okay. So, next Wednesday would be a realistic timeline?
Yes. I believe it's next Wednesday.
And I mean, I guess the question is too then, I think that there are third-grade families who would, in a week, be willing to say, my child's going to leave their home school and go to Holland Hill?
It's happened in the past, yes.
Okay. So, this timeline is similar to two years ago. I know last year was different. No, no. I get that.
Not last year. Last year, we were able to do better, but yeah.
Okay. So, this is not an unrealistic timeline if it were to happen. It's no more rushed than it was two years ago.
Yes. That's right.
Okay.
Ms. Rotelli?
Hi. Did you say that you expect there to be about 40? Or are there more kids that you might offer?
No, I think the number is around 40. The last two years, it was around 40. I believe one year was 39, another year was 40. So, that's our understanding of what the, we expect the number to be about.
And if 40 were offered, and you could only accept 25, because that's the max capacity of the classroom, what happens? How do you choose who goes and who doesn't?
We run a lottery.
And...
I'm sorry, Ms. Rotelli. We run a lottery, again, if, let's say it's 40 students. If all 40 have expressed interest in attending, or if 26 expressed interest in attending, then we would run the lottery.
Okay. And then, to Mrs. Pitko's point of the students that do not get into the Math Academy but qualified for the Math Academy, and to Mr. Peterson's point of not servicing those children, this seems unfairly punitive towards those families who can't opt in due to transportation or dual-parent households, who rely on public transportation. And to those kids who, at no fault of their own, can't get to Holland Hill, we will still provide no differentiation in their classrooms at their home schools?
I didn't say we wouldn't provide any differentiation. What I said was that they would not be part of the Math Academy curriculum. Again, these are the conditions under which the board adopted the program two years ago.
But the children who were not, were accepted into the Math Academy but couldn't go to the Math Academy have remained in their elementary schools for the past two years, receiving the regular fourth and fifth grade curriculum?
That's correct.
Mr. Asa?
So, I have some serious concerns here because we're saying, to what Mrs. Rotelli just said, what about those kids that can't participate? What about those kids that don't have the means to get into this program but are identified, right? So, we've known this for two years. We've known that there are students identified that cannot participate. And in two years, we have done nothing to figure it out? Because that's what I'm hearing. And that, to me, is a red flag. So, Mr. Peterson asked the question of, how long would it take to create what we need to serve these kids? And the answer is not before the school year. But I want to know why in two years, we have not taken any strides towards something that we knew was ultimately going to be the solution for these children and their needs?
Well, I have to, I'll be honest, I got to put it back on the board a little bit. We've not had direction to move this program forward. This program has sat in this kind of limbo. We have supported the students who've remained in their classrooms, in their home schools. We've worked with them. The teachers work with them. As I've said before, those students still have the ability to advance into the advanced class in math, and their teachers support them in that. In fact, over the last few years, the numbers of students entering advanced math in Grade Six has increased across the district, not as a result of the Math Academy, because of improved instruction in all of our classrooms. But again, the fact that there hasn't been transportation, the fact that we have a single fourth grade and a single fifth grade, that information has been available to everybody. And we've not, we have not come forward with a budget proposal to make a change in that because we understood originally, two years ago, the board agreed to these terms. As I said, we were fully committed in January to the idea of dissolving the program. We did not have the ability to pull that off this year.
Why?
We ran out of time. Our teachers, Mr. Wakeman, have been heavily involved in the learning model changes necessitated by the pandemic. They've been heavily involved in the interventions that are required for students to return to school. That has consumed their time.
So, putting it back on the board is a bit like hitting the nail on the head here, to a point. Because we went through the budget process, we went through it, it was discussed briefly at one of the meetings because it was found out that it was left out of the budget. But nobody took the means or the strides towards getting it back in during budget season or making an amendment to the vote. But now, all of a sudden, we're here, and I'm telling my fellow board members, I think that's just, I wasn't going to be the one to bring it forward because I haven't been an advocate for this program. But to be doing it now, when we passed a budget and were cut $2 million, I'm sorry, we were reduced $2 million in the process that our town charter lays out, now we're looking at adjustments with very little actual cuts. We're utilizing savings, and we're utilizing, now we're looking at a $285,000 roughly excess of what we passed before. So, I just have a fundamental problem with the whole situation that we're in now. And I just wanted to go on the record saying that because I think that we should be talking about taking some of this money and putting it towards meeting those kids' needs. If we have to put money that we have extra, putting towards creating something and spending more to get teachers' time so we can serve these kids next year, I would support that.
I think, Mr. Asa, the issue is, as I was saying before, the logistical issue of trying to address the relatively few numbers of students at each of the schools would be, I think, a very costly initiative. And I do think that the solution to this issue lies in the professional learning that has to happen at their classroom level. You know, and I mentioned before, the availability of Mr. Wakeman and the MST's, but part of this issue has been the availability of our classroom teachers for the past year and a half as well, and their ability to participate in professional learning. We've not had teachers, we've not been able to do any meaningful professional learning since last March because either staff weren't in the building, or we didn't want to take them out of the classroom to participate in professional learning because we knew how precious in-classroom instructional time was. So, we've just not had staff time to work with them.
Can you elaborate what would go into developing that professional learning?
In order to address instructional practices, for essentially, you know, so we were talking 35 fourth-grade teachers, 35 fifth-grade teachers roughly across the district, you would need time, and we will need time, to watch the classroom modeling and practice that's currently happened at Holland Hill. Well, let me take one step back. We'd have work to do to go through the professional learning, the curriculum work, and adjust teachers to the expectations and changes in standards that's required of teaching at that pace. We'd have to then have them watch in action, the teachers who are currently in the Math Academy, to have an understanding of what that work is and be able to replicate it. We'd have to, and that would take some time. We'd also have to have some practice time for that to happen. The teachers who've been teaching fourth-grade math, fifth-grade math for a number of years, a lot of what they do essentially has to be, thrown out is a harsh word, but I'll say thrown out, and replaced with this accelerated approach. And again, that we're not even yet at a level of, what is the classroom structure that supports this? You know, there was one point back when this was being discussed, that one of the ways it could evolve is you could start to have pilot Math Academies, a different, kind of in the feeder pattern. But that's something we pulled, you know, there was no interest at that time of doing it. And that's not something I am proposing. But the alternative is some type of pull-out before-school, after-school program like I suggested, and some combination of independent study work that students would do in place of their current math class. And how we staff that, how we support that are all questions that we really need to address.
So, in essence, then, moving forward, you're saying that the staff wouldn't have the opportunity to observe a fourth-grade Math Academy next year, so therefore, wouldn't be able to truly build the adjustments and observations needed?
If we didn't have the Grade Four Math Academy next year, we would have to use Grade Five. I mean, it would not be the same thing, but I think the approach, the way the class is structured, there would certainly be value in seeing that for the fourth-grade teachers as well.
So, when we went into January, you believed that we would be able to do these things in a matter of months and come up with what we need?
Yes. That was our intention.
I'll turn the floor over.
Follow-up to that, Ms. Pitko?
Two years ago, when this was proposed, I voted against it for many of the reasons that we just said. Number one, I said I would vote for it if it was like a CLC, and that it was in a feeder pattern, and that students could opt in to go to one of the schools that's within their feeder pattern. But that was not discussed. I said, one of my objections to the Math Academy is that the students are segregated, which, in special education, that's not allowed. It breaks the law. We moved on. I said, I didn't like the fact. The biggest reason why I would not vote for this academy is because when you identify a student who deserves special education, they should be receiving it. So, for two years, we've known that children deserve this specialized education. I said that at the table two years ago, that I was completely against this because we should be giving those children that specialized education. I don't think it's fair to say the board said. No, I'm part of this board, and I've been saying it for two years. And I don't agree with this right now because I think those 40 children should get that specialized education. I fight tooth and nail for my child. I advocate every day to get the specialized education. I advocate every day to get the specialized education she needs. We're getting tons of emails from parents advocating for this math-specialized education. I understand why it's being backed forth, but I'm thinking of all those other kids who are not going to opt into this program simply because of transportation, or they don't want to leave their neighborhood school. I would not settle for that for my child, and I don't expect any of those parents to do it either. And if I have to fight tooth and nail for my kid to get a specialized reading program, they should be able to get their specialized math. So I'm sorry, we should put the money in the budget to get that curriculum for those fourth and fifth graders. That's what we should get, because it should have been done. I don't know why the Math Academy went through, I didn't vote for it. But for two years, I've been saying, let's meet all the children's needs.
Mrs. Maxicanelli?
Okay, so obviously, I'm one of the people who voted for it. I was the person at the last meeting who brought it up as something I wanted factored into the budget adjustments. I couldn't be more enthusiastic. And to hear my fellow board members speak so negatively of something that we have been assailed by both emails and public comment in praise of is a little discouraging and not supportive of what our staff and parents have been through. But let's deal with some of the comments that have said. Mr. Cummings made very clear, this isn't a money issue. This isn't something we can throw money at and roll out in September of 2021. This is a time issue. There isn't the time. When Mr. Wakeman and his MST's are focused on the learning loss, which we have already identified through data, as being present in our current elementary school students, the fact that by doing this, we are going to allow them to tighten their focus on that aspect of the math curriculum, I'm all for. Getting those students back to grade level, getting those students back confident in their numbers, and I'm not going to try to go into any other math lingo. But, you know, the elementary school is a critical moment between fractions and everything else, and that is where I want the focus of our staff. I accept that, the point is, obviously, a lot of the comments that my fellow board members have said, Mr. Cummings overall agrees with, and did so publicly last year, when he said that the Math Academy is not the optimal way to roll this out going forward, to meet these educational needs. When I brought this up as something I wanted factored into a scenario, it was in recognition that the time does not exist in order for this to be done thoughtfully in the elementary school program for next year. So it's kind of like the story of the starfish, which is a favorite story of mine. Heaven forbid we just leave all of them to nothing. Instead, we're going to have 40 or so students with identified needs who have the opportunity to opt into this. I would love to be in the position where we have to have a lottery, that there is so much interest. In fact, I would argue that we could possibly contemplate four fourth-grade, two fourth-grade sections, if it came with a reduction in a section someplace else. But that's not the topic for now. These are students we all acknowledge have a demonstrated need. These are also students where parents can opt out of what is being offered, and that is the significant difference in how we serve these students. But again, Mr. Cummings has said repeatedly that this needs to be moved back into the elementary schools. He agrees with the comments that have been raised here. It's that it will not be done with fidelity or well if it is done for September of 2021. It's that simple. And I cannot imagine just saying, well, let's half-ass it and just see if we can, you know, let's throw a few differentiated worksheets at them. Now, I know that is not what staff would do, because they're more caring than that. I'm just not sure exactly how much better than that it would be. And I thank goodness that we had the Math Academy experience, because it truly gave us the pilot experience to really get two professionals to focus on this intently, because what I'm interested is a year-long process of rolling this out with the supportive PD for the teachers who are going to be responsible for delivering this, the MST's who will be responsible for supporting those classroom teachers, and Mr. Wakeman who will be overseeing it. That can't happen over a summer. It just can't. And the fact that it hasn't happened between January and now, really? We're challenging that? We had to vote to put in an hour and a half of extra time of a delayed opening because of the time challenges facing our staff for the regular instructional model. And you think that they have the time to, oh, I don't know, let's take the Math Academy model and roll it out into 10 other elementary schools? I would hazard a guess that the other fourth-grade teachers at Holland Hill will need additional PD, and they're in the same building that the academy is taking place. These children will be underserved if we tried to act in haste and just say, cut it, let's go with what the original budget proposal was. And I do appreciate the notion that that is what we communicated to the other town bodies. But the spring was what the spring was, and we know what has been demanded of our staff. And for us to challenge that and say, well, they should have done this too, is a little bit disrespectful, not only of their time, but of the time it takes to unfold effective educational practice. And this is not going to be easy to do. I think Mr. Cummings is issuing a warning to us already right now, that not to expect that what we've heard at the Math Academy is going to be what it's going to look like when it's in the elementary schools. It's going to be quite different. And for it to be effective means it truly is something that we've got the great job that Ms. McCoy and the Holland Hill staff have done. And how do we bring that out? This is going to take time. I want it done well. We've underserved those children for the years prior to Mr. Cummings, then we look to address it, now we can't drop the ball. And to not support this, I just don't understand that notion. And by the way, if you recall, part of our conversation before had been when we voted on this first, was we hoped this program would grow so much, to Mrs. Picco's point about the feeder pattern, that this program might grow so much that we might be able to put one on both sides of town. That had been part of the discussion, that this program might grow and be so successful to help serve these children. I also don't agree with some of the rhetoric I've heard regarding this being elitist in nature. We just heard one of the callers who called in for public comment reference the carpooling that is done for this. You know, this is not just, this is not only open to those kids who are at home, who have moms who can just, you know, drop whatever and be able to be at the beck and call of the car service. You know, families are finding a way to make this work for themselves. Do I think it's serving everybody? No. But Mr. Cummings agrees with that, which is why this is going to be moved back to the elementary schools. We know that. But September 2021, we have kids to serve, and shame on us if we don't. So that, I'm going to go through any of my other points, see if I'd wanted to say. You know, again, we have the option of students can stay behind if they choose, but again, we're not kidding ourselves that differentiation is solving this for them. They are learning math and appreciating math at a different level beyond what a classroom teacher can do, who already has multiple levels for whom he or she is differentiating in the classroom. So I guess I'll just leave it at that. I mean, my interest had even been, I'd put this out to Mr. Cummings, of, I want to make, I do hope that we have the PD money in the current budget, so that next year, we can support whatever needs there are to get, you know, to tap into, because that's going to be time for the Holland Hill staff, and that is going to be time for our other professionals, and it could very well be above and beyond their current teaching obligation. But I do hope that we have the PD money available to support that, so that this can be done well. And I'd even hope that we might get, you know, an update as part of our December budget rollout. I don't know. Thank you.
Just, Mr. Cummings, can you just once respond to that, and then Ms. Picco?
Yeah, I have to just make a correction. I've been texted twice, that the number we, it's back to Ms. Gerber's question, the minimal number we'd say we'd run the class with two years ago was 13.
Piggyback on that, that's what we wound up running it with, but I believe we need to look into whether that's what the board agreed to, whether it was 13. I don't recall that, but I do remember that being the number of enrolled.
I'll see if I can find out the current fifth-grade enrollment. I'm sure somebody's going to text it to me in a minute here.
I just have a quick follow-up question. I remember that first year, one of the questions we had was about gender, boys versus girls. Do we have that data for fourth and fifth grade?
Do you have that, Dr. Sevignac?
You're looking for the current students enrolled in Math Academy?
Yeah, I remember the first year. I remember it was heavy on the boys' side. I'm looking for the current year.
I don't have the current students. I have the ones recommended, but not, I can get it for you.
How about the current ones? So let's start there.
I don't have the number in front of me, but I do know, you are right, I think we had four girls the first year. That number did go up in the current fourth grade. I just don't have it with me. And I don't mean the number of girls, the percentage of girls in the class did go up.
Okay. Mr. Isa, followed by Ms. Groenzi.
Ms. Picco asked the first part of the question that I was going to ask, which was around gender equality. That was a topic that we did discuss, and I believe there was, you know, some inquiries from the public on that. I don't remember if it was at the board or in Finance Committee, but one of the things that I believe we were told was that work was going to happen to help us get to a more equal level of gender. And I'm curious what has been done in the last year, year and a half towards that.
To deliberately increase the number of girls in the program?
I believe it was Mr. Wakeman commented at the table at one meeting, and we talked about what can be done to increase the level of engagement and signing up of the female student body, since it was so male-centered. And I believe we were told that strides were going to be taken towards fixing that.
So I've just got the numbers, you are correct. In the current fifth grade, there are 13 students, three of them are girls. There are eight girls in the fourth grade and 11 boys. So, but 19 total students, and eight of them are girls.
Okay, so closer to a split.
Yeah. Mr. Isa, you're correct, and I think that work was done, once we realized that the first class was more boy-heavy, that an effort was made to balance the class a little bit better by gender.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
So we'll be using whatever we did to accomplish that leveling in identifying, if this were to pass and stay in, we'll be still targeting that?
Absolutely. I also want to point out, because we can bring these numbers to you, I don't have them with me tonight, but I also want to point out, we do have concerns about equity distribution of students across the different schools. I don't think that we're getting necessarily all schools particularly sending or identifying students, and it says something to us about our current instructional program in the elementary schools, that it's something we have to address. So this is one way to start to identify some of those gaps as well, and how we address them.
Ms. Groenzi, our secretary has some information about the class size discussion for when the.
Yeah, so this is back from the budget, the 1920 budget discussions, and under logistics, it does say, for the Math Academy proposal that was presented to the board on January 21st, 2018, class size 13 to 25.
Thank you, Mrs. Gerber. Ms. Groenzi?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, and actually also just wanted to make a comment about class size, because I do really hope that if this does pass, that we could consider increasing the class size for this program to move forward. So that's sort of my first comment. And second, I just have a question. Since you've already indicated that you've identified the students that you'd like to invite, can you just expand on the actual exact number that you'll be inviting, the gender breakdown, if you can? And then also, if you, I mean, this is sort of a difficult one, but if, when you're looking at the current class sizes, if you would anticipate that there would be any section collapsing, extra teachers sort of resulting from this? I mean, that's sort of a magic eight ball, but at least you could identify if it looks like it's a possibility.
So there are 41 identified students at this point who can elect to go into the Math Academy, grade four. 24 of them are boys, and 17 are girls. And to your last question, I have not run the numbers in subtracting those students from each fourth grade across the 11 schools to see if it will collapse a section, but can check on that.
Okay, thanks, that would be great. The other question I have is just a little bit about the planning time, because, you know, I was thinking when you were speaking about the plans for January, to be able to accommodate these needs for all students within the classrooms that needed it, just in the span of time between January and the school start, right? So, you know, thinking to the point of time we are at now, we have all summer, could we consider implementing this program partway through the year next year and using, because this is a budget discussion, I'm just thinking, using that dollar amount towards professional development that would take us to serving the schools during the school year, but maybe not in September? Could that be a possibility?
I don't believe it would be, Ms. Groenzi. We're struggling now to get access to staff. You know, I don't think there's a lot of availability of teachers for summer work, professional learning. We've been pretty much told, thanks but no thanks by a lot of our staff, we're struggling to, you know, to hire staff for the summer programs. And I think it's just where people are right now. So to do that work well, we would need essentially every fourth-grade teacher, you know, or at least one from each school, and I'm not sure that we'd get them for the requisite time we would need. I would say to you, though, that the idea of piloting or starting to build a program in during the course of next year is a possibility, because if we think about 41 students, at most 25 get into the program, there's going to be 16 students scattered throughout the school system then, at least, who would not have access to the program. And how might we begin to support them during the course of next year? That's a learning goal for us.
Thank you. So I would appreciate that consideration, because the sort of sticking point for me is really the underserved students in this scenario, and I would love for that to be addressed at some point next year. I think that'd be great. Thanks.
Can I just have a follow-up to that? Ms. Rotelli?
And just to follow up, the math curriculum is going, is revised and approved for the next school year.
K-12 math curriculum?
K through 12.
That is correct. That'll be on the board's agenda during next year.
So, you know, my vision for this was that the work to incorporate instruction for these high-level learners would be part of that curriculum work. It wouldn't necessarily be separate, but this would be something that we would be building into the next iteration of the math curriculum, which got delayed this year because of COVID. And I really love Ms. Groenzi's suggestion about as staff is working on this curriculum, it just seems that those students that are not opting into the Math Academy, not to say that they're guinea pigs, but they are in the classroom, and as new curriculum is being written, there is an opportunity there potentially to trial that new curriculum.
That's correct.
Thank you. Ms. Rotelli?
Yes, thank you. So I had expressed concerns about the Math Academy before I was on the board, and I really haven't changed my perspective on it. You know, I think not everyone sees the need. That was just referenced a little while ago. I, although I do believe, and some of the emails were very impactful from the students and their families, some of them are also very divisive and a little elitist. I think you have to be really careful when we are separating children out like that. And also, I'd like to talk a little bit about how this district determines need, because the district has a process of determining need, and anyone who sat in a PPT or a 504 is aware of that. And it's usually tied to the ability of the child to access the curriculum, which is not the case for the Math Academy. Because historically speaking, those who are seeking a similar learning environment, meeting an all-day secluded program where the instruction is specifically embedded into every subject, historically speaking, those families who might be fighting for something like that for their child, say for reading, would either have to unilaterally place their child out of district or file due process. And yet, here, we've decided that we are going to take now 13 kids and provide them with an all-day secluded program. with an all-day secluded program, and that that's okay, because they're gifted in math. But historically speaking, in this district, we have not afforded the same to those children who actually cannot access the curriculum. That is my main problem here. So I don't see how we can say it's okay for one segment of the population, but not the others. And quite honestly, when I've listened to the discussions on the Math Academy in the past, we've always talked about differentiating instruction. And I have heard that there's just no way we can differentiate instruction to this level of child in these classes. And quite frankly, as a sped parent, it is like a slap in the face, because we sit in those meetings and we are assured, when we are told that our child doesn't need pull-out resource room service, that our child can be differentiated to in any general classroom, and they can certainly differentiate to our child, who, by the way, if I'm just using common sense, would be more difficult for that teacher to differentiate to a child struggling to access the curriculum than a child not struggling. So I don't want to hear the argument that it's just not possible for children who are gifted, but it's certainly possible for children who are struggling. If we want to have a deeper conversation at another time about public education in the state of Connecticut and inclusion in our classrooms, we can do that. And I think maybe that's what we need to have. You have said earlier, Mr. Cummings, that you do not want to see this return to leveled classrooms in the fourth and fifth grade. So, you know, where are we if we're not separating kids out by ability in the elementary school, or we're differentiating instruction, or you just need more time to create this curriculum? I don't know. It obviously seems like we can't solve that tonight, but it is a reason why I will not be supporting the Math Academy going back. And I also have a problem with the fact that this was not included in your budget in January, and somehow that's changed today.
Mrs. Masconelli?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Rotelli, for bringing up that point about the leveled math, because I too have a question. That is not a question for tonight, but going forward, I definitely want to hear more as well about the notion of why we aren't considering leveled math. I've, it's often been, it's been one that's been percolating for well over a decade, with some schools doing it and others not, and we have never had an examination of the data that has resulted from that. So just heads up when it comes to math curriculum, I definitely want to hear more about that. But to Mrs. Rotelli's point about accessing the curriculum, she is incorrect. These students are not accessing the curriculum, because the curriculum being presented to them is the wrong curriculum. These fourth-grade students should not be accessing the fourth-grade curriculum, they are beyond it. So when we say that they can't access it, that is in fact the truth. That would be like if I'm put into a math class where I'm doing basic arithmetic, I'm not accessing the curriculum, because it's the inappropriate curriculum that I am being presented with. I'm on a whole other level. And to the point regarding the sped students and the overall category of exceptional learners, yes, differentiating can be effective within a range, and then there's the range outside of which it is not effective. And I am not about to try to speak to specific students. There are students that I can differentiate for within the classroom and take care of myself, and there are those that will need additional help from a pull-out service, or in the matter of the high school, scheduled into their program. But every student, obviously, we know this, every student is different. Many can be differentiated for within the classroom. Again, the point of these students is they cannot be differentiated, because they are needing to access an entirely different curriculum from what is in that fourth-grade classroom. Are they managing fine? Sure, we're looking to do better than that. And I would, that's definitely something that I should have brought up as part of the district improvement plan, but, you know, really maybe emphasizing a greater point is that I really do want a much deeper dive on reaching our different learners. And that includes a really honest look at what is being achieved by our current gifted program, and, you know, the idea of skills versus content is definitely something I want to have a greater conversation about. I think someone pointed out, we do a great job with, you know, music and differentiating for that in elementary school, and I think we need to do a lot more for helping students who excel in areas move at a greater rate that's more in line with their interests and their ability.
Okay. I think that we've covered this topic tonight, and we have discussed it before, and, you know, any other questions or suggestions on the budget? Mr. Asa?
Well, since the motion is recommending Scenario 1, there are some other things that I would like to discuss. So procedurally, would I have to make a motion to amend and put Scenario 5 forward, so we can discuss what that entails, or can we go into discussion without an amendment?
If you have questions about one of this, about just, about the budget, you can ask those questions now. If you feel like you want to put forth an amendment, that is also, you know, fine. If you need information before being able to put forth that amendment, ask your question. Clarification on something?
I would like to hear more about the recommended Scenario 5.
Well, the Scenario 5 wasn't, this was asked, Board members asked for additional information. Do you have something specific on Scenario 5? Or would you like to put that forward as an amendment?
I guess I'd like to put it forth as an amendment, because I'd like to dive a little deeper. So I'd like to make a motion to amend the motion on the table to use Scenario 5. Sorry.
So you would like to make an amendment that the Board of Education-- to reflect Scenario 5?
Yes.
Point of clarification, before we do that, I think what we're trying to get to, and to correct me if I'm wrong, is just to be able to talk about any of these scenarios right now? Or do you actually want us to vote? Because then we're going to a vote on a scenario? If you make that amendment, right? To the chair?
Well, not after, until, we'd have to have a discussion first.
Okay, so discussion post, second amendment, okay, understood. Want to go to a vote on a scenario yet? Okay.
So made a motion? Do we have a second? Ms. Picko?
Okay, so in this Scenario 5, this talks about the same open-choice scenario as in 1. All of the insurance and pension and life insurance and all of the benefit adjustments remain the same. The bid award, COVID PPE, OTPT, all that stays the same, so do the FTE changes. And what this scenario is proposing is actually talking about the restoration of elementary art, not bringing back the Math Academy. And if the Board remembers, during the budget cycle, it was recommended that art be reduced by X amount to cover the additional cost of the social workers. So the question was asked by another fellow Board member, what would the cost be to restore art to what it was at the elementary level before the budget process? And in doing so, since this is slightly less than the cost put in for the Math Academy, $4,121 went in, because it was extra, to the additional sped funding, and it restores the, well, it keeps the line 16 at the same. So I'm curious if Board members that support this have comments on the reasoning behind it.
Mr. Peterson?
Thank you. I would like to say that I'm wholly in favor of Scenario 5, but it was a difficult conversation that we had during the budget season, because everyone understood the need for additional social work support. And I said at the time that I was troubled by the choice of offset. And it was brought up by not just me, but other Board members, that once we take something away from a student's day, it has a very difficult time making its way back in. And we've kind of been given an opportunity to avoid that altogether, to not make the cut, that all of our art teachers in the district, a large number of our teachers were opposed to and expressed some dismay about. This would bring us back to the status quo, and I think that we should take advantage of the opportunity to do that. I mean, for me, it's, the reasoning is very simple. We don't have to give up a thing that we thought we had to give up, and that's positive, and we should pursue that.
Ms. Jacobson?
So during budget season, I was also upset about the fact that we were cutting art to accommodate our need for greater social workers, and put forth the motion to fully restore the art time in elementary school, which granted was amended, and we did restore some of that time. So some of it has been restored. I'm still in favor of restoring art, so I do like this idea and this notion. However, I just want to say, listening to all my fellow Board members on the other matter, that things are connected, and I've had a hard time today, because I feel like these charts here are picking, like, someone's going to win and someone's going to lose, and I don't like that. There's no scenario here where we restore both or cut both. So when Mr. Asa is done, I might have an amendment for both. I understand all of my fellow Board members who have expressed their concerns, and I know that we've been through that a lot on Math Academy. I also understand that the reality at this point is that we would also underserve those who can attend, and I don't want to see them miss out either, and I don't want to see kids miss out on the art that I feel is really important to them, and I have no artistic ability. So that's my great appreciation for what we develop in middle school, whether it be music or art. So I am interested in this, but I also don't want to pit it against the other either. It's been a difficult day for me, because I want to do right by all of our kids, and I think both of these are important to someone. Maybe not everyone, but to someone. So I'm hoping that as we continue to talk about this, that maybe we can find a place for both of them, at least for next year, as we work on what Mrs. Vitale brought up, our math curriculum, and Mr. Cummings has brought up in terms of the work that's going to be done to bring this to all of the kids in elementary school. So I'm not discounting those that are missing out. And that's just what I want to say, so I'll let Mr. Asa finish, but I will probably look to, hope to find both.
Mr. Asa, then Ms. Rotelli?
Yeah, this-- Sorry, getting multiple messages that my mic is not working for live stream. Mr. Peterson, this is why I handle the IT. So the question was asked by a Board member, I don't remember who, and it was provided in the packet response, but could someone just answer the question? With a restoration of art, how many students at the elementary level are served? We know with the Math Academy coming back, it's up to 25. How many students would be served with the full restoration of art, and I believe it was grades four and five?
I don't know if somebody has that in front of me, because I answered that question, but offhand, I don't remember. It was, I basically went in the budget book and added up next year's projected grade four and grade five, and I think it was around 1,300?
Yeah, it was around 1,300.
I do have one question. If Mr. Asa could clarify what he means by "served," all of these students are getting art. So if you're talking about someone who's losing five minutes a six-day cycle, what exactly do you mean by "served"?
Affected.
Because that's not the same thing we're talking about with the Math Academy.
Okay. Mr. Asa, are you done? Ms. Rotelli?
Yes, and that was my question in the Q and A's, by the way. I asked how many students would be impacted with a full art restore, and I believe it was 1,351.
54.
54, thank you, Jeff. And I do want to just point out that even if you voted for the Math Academy, you're still underserving all of the kids who qualify, who will not get in. That hasn't changed. But I do think there is something to point out, that when you're comparing these two, a full art restore, which I voted with Ms. Groenzy and Ms. Jacobson not to cut art. To me, this is an opportunity for us to not take away from the art curriculum, which we did hear from the staff. They were very unhappy with that cut. But the fact that restoring the art would impact 1,300 kids in our district for the better, and I'll never understand the idea of taking away art instruction to make room for social work, which I know social work is necessary, but art is therapeutic in and of itself. I don't think we should be taking away one for the other. So I just think that speaks volumes, that we could have a positive impact on 1,300 kids with this restoration of the art curriculum.
Ms. Masconelli?
Thank you. And I appreciate all the views. What this is clearly pointing to in the future are a lot of difficult conversations, because at the budget time, and this entire spring, we keep talking about structural change. Again, a phrase I've asked that we stopped using and talk about economic efficiencies. So here we have before us something that came out as an economic efficiency of a .9 that would involve 10 minutes in a six-day cycle for fifth graders, not all of whom would appreciate the extra 10 minutes, and we're finding ourselves unable to do it, and our teachers weren't happy, but the fact that English teachers were extremely unhappy with the thought of six full-time teachers being cut isn't factoring into our reasoning. And we're going to have to be consistent about that going forward. And obviously, that involves evaluating the programs, obviously, that involves, to a strong degree, taking a motion out of it, which I'm not, that's not what's happening at this table, I'm not saying that. But it's just an interesting conversation from one meeting to the next of how we're going to handle this. And it's my understanding, and through the chair, Mr. Cummings, please correct me if I'm wrong, but this 10 minutes, for example, for fifth grade and fourth grade, where they would not be in art, is going to be reappointed to the language arts, is that correct?
That would be correct, yes.
So that the work that could be done there for this year in reading and writing recovery, there's something very tangible benefiting from these 10 minutes?
That's absolutely correct. We felt that core instruction would be the beneficiary of those few minutes that we could give it, absolutely.
And so it, look, it's not that I'm looking for art to be cut, but if we're going, I'm definitely not in favor of doing so, and I hear the numbers about all of those elementary school students minus the kindergartners who have no change. But there are other benefits to be gained, there are, those need to weigh in, and it's just, I'm interested in hearing what Mrs. Jacobson has as an offering in terms of what would enable us to do both, but I would not be in favor of doing this and leaving those Math Academy students with no option then.
Can I make a quick point of clarification?
Yes, Mr. Peterson.
Ms. Vitale, you sent an email today after a back and forth with Superintendent Cummings about what the art hours actually amounted to, and for the fourth and fifth graders, that 10 minutes per session amounts to five hours a year.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Any other questions on-- Any other questions on this?
I, um, so this isn't really a question. I just wanted to comment on the idea of art being related to economic efficiency. I don't see it that way at all. I think it's a really important part of our, the curriculum that we offer to these students, and I was actually quite upset that we had to cut that earlier, and I would like to see it added back in. And I'm very interested in hearing Ms. Jacobson's proposal, because I would very much like to see both of these programs reinstated in our schools.
I will not be supporting this amendment. I understand the concerns about art, but I feel like we discussed this during the budget process. We did restore some time, and I think that coming off of this past year, when we're focused on learning loss, that that time going back to the classroom teachers for language arts instruction, I think is valuable. I mean, students are not losing instruction, it's just in an area in a core subject. I also appreciate, you know, the superintendent's approach to this in terms of when you add something that is a cost driver, that you look to find a reduction, because the messaging throughout the budget season from other town bodies was pretty, was loud and strong about that, and members of this board, that we just can't always keep adding. So I appreciate the fiscal responsibility in that approach based on conversations that we've had. So I will not be supporting this motion.
And Ms. Vitale?
When we talk about, we're not talking about adding, we're talking about restoring curriculum that was cut. And, you know, to some people, it's five minutes, sometime, you know, five, 10 minutes, no big deal, but it is a big deal. And are we talking about learning loss, or are we talking about social emotional health? Because we could take those five minutes, 10 minutes in elementary school and let the kids go outside and play, because I guarantee you, a lot more is going to be accomplished giving these kids more time doing things like art and recess outside, learning how to play again with their friends and not be afraid than, you know, five or 10 more minutes in language arts.
Mr. Peterson?
Hi, I just, I was trying to find it here. Can I just clarify with Mr. Cummings? If we, if we go ahead with the cut to elementary art, there will be a cost, minimal one, to changing the curriculum to adapt to the new shorter periods. Is that correct?
Potentially. We, Dr. Zavichinzik has reached out to Ms. Hermsen of the Art Department, and they're not sure yet if they're going to have to make any curricular adjustments. That's something they were going to reevaluate in the middle of the 2122 school year.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Jacobson?
I just want to point out that, you know, art had already been cut once before. It was once every five days, and then it moved to every six days. So it wasn't cut just once, it was cut twice. So right now, all we're talking about is the second cut and not inclusive of the first cut. So we were already under the state recommendation in terms of time for art to begin with before we cut it again. My point during the budget season, and I think it was the point of our art staff and many of the teachers who wrote in about it, that we were already under the standard as it was. And that is an important point, too. We do get literacy every day, correct? Students in elementary school have literacy every day. Right now, we're at art for once every six days, correct? Okay.
Okay, any other comments on this? We'll take it to the board voting on the amendment.
Can I, can I make a point of order very quickly?
Yes.
Would it be easier for Mrs. Jacobson to amend the amendment?
Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
If you have something prepared.
I do. I mean, I can amend one or amend five. I mean, they're both the same at this point.
This is the amendment on the table.
Okay. All right.
Or, or say you've got a little...
No, it's fine. I'm going to amend, I guess at this point, scenario five, because that's the amendment on the table. Let me just get the glasses here. I'm going to add 48,879 in revenue, and I'll tell you how I get there. What is not on this chart is additional revenue for special ed revenue from other districts that pertains to the 26 additional open choice students that we are looking to take under scenario one and five. So right now, I'm on five. I can tell you how I get to that number if you want to, but the amendment is to add 48,879 in revenue on that line item. The rest of the 95,879, which is $47,000, is to reduce contracted services by $47,000 for facility study, given two reasons. One, we have a lot of work to do this year in terms of, which we'll get to later on in the board goal, but I'm not sure we're going to be in any position this year to be giving a charge to someone to do a redistricting plan. And if it's not for that reason, we can use American Rescue funds for facility studies if it has to do with health and safety or facility needs that we may have to address the pandemic. So should we need $47,000 for a facility study, we can use ARP funds for that. So the restoration of the 95,879 is 48,879 in sped revenue and $47,000 from contracted services. That's my amendment. We keep our art where it is, and we allow for Math Academy to go forward for those students that are upcoming in third grade now, knowing it's a short-term solution as we look to bring this back to everyone else who qualifies.
Do I have a second for that amendment, to the amendment? Ms. Gernsy? Mrs. Maxicanelli?
Yes, could you please give more color to the 48,879?
Okay. Mr. Cummings, do you have a question? Yes, I can definitely, that would be great. So this chart, if we all recall, that was given to the RTM, you guys remember this chart? It has to do with all of our open choice revenue items over, throughout the years. Is she coming up?
Ms. Munsell, can you come up to the microphone?
Do you have this document by any chance for us or no?
Was what was given to the RTM in our email. I mean, I can go, I can go in and get it. Everyone has it.
That's not what I asked. I asked if you had it for us tonight.
I don't have a copy of it for you tonight.
Thank you.
Do you happen to know what, what date we would have gotten that in the email? I remember the chart, I just, I'm having difficulty pulling it up.
It was one of the RTM backup. Open choice revenue and student count.
Ms. Jacobson, would you mind if I just asked Ms. Munsell to just go through the process of how the revenue for open choice is calculated for the special, for the, what we bill for special education costs that are over the $3,000?
Can I make a quick point of order? Would it be unreasonable to take a five-minute recess and have this chart printed out for us?
No, can we, is Ms. Brown, can we get copies of this for the board?
Yeah.
Sure.
I'm sorry, can you have the date?
Can I have a second to the recess? Mr. Asa, all in favor of a five-minute recess? Five-minute recess? Vitale, Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Pitco, Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Maxicanelli, Mr. Peterson, Mr. Asa, Ms. Gernsy in favor, opposed, Mrs. Gerber opposed. Five-minute recess, eight-one. We'll be back at 9:17. Before we talk through Ms. Jacobson's calculation for new revenue, would you mind if we have Ms. Munsell just talk the board through how she calculates the amount that we bill for, for those open choice students who receive special education services?
Actually, that's not calculated in the business office. That's calculated by special ed, because they actually take all the costs associated with each individual child and bill for anything over $3,000. So that's how we get to that number. And that can change and will change depending on the students.
So to project revenue for students that are not even enrolled, it could be zero, it could, it's somewhat of an arbitrary number?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Munsell. Ms. Jacobson, talk us through your calculation.
Okay. So in looking at this chart that we sent to the RTM, obviously, we have the number of students, of open choice students, and the revenue for the 3,000 plus what we have billed historically or been paid by Bridgeport for special ed services. In doing analysis on this chart, we can easily determine that on an average basis, roughly 20% of open choice students, year over year, are coming in requiring special ed services. So 17, 18, it was 21.5, 2018, 19, it was 20%, 1920, it was 20.3. This year, right now, it's at 19%. So on average, we can expect of 26 additional students, based on years of experience of actuels, that another five students, we can anticipate would need special ed services. With me so far? Okay. Then looking at what we actually received over the years and over time, and correct, that it varies every year, because it's based on student, you know, students over the 3,000, obviously, but if you look at the actuels and the historical of that, there is, there is a basis to that that gives us an idea of roughly what we're looking at year over year in terms of what we have been billing for the years that we have actually billed. So how I got to the 48, sorry, the 48,879, I used the lowest number. So 2021, we had 14 students, and we billed 159,568. You with me? That's the lowest number that we billed out of the last one, two, three, four, five years, at 11,397.70 cents on average per. All of the other years, it was actually more than that. So I'm using the smallest number of the five years that we've billed. So I'm taking five students times 11,4, that gives me $57,000, and I'm only using 48,879 towards this allocation.
Can you clarify the lowest year? To me, it looks like it was 1617.
Sure. No, but not on a per pupil basis, not on an average basis. So 14 students, you see what I'm saying?
Thank you.
Yep, you got it. And 1617 was actually one of the higher, it was 12,000, over 12,000. And 17 and 18, it was over 14,000. So I'm actually using the smallest number that we've historically received. So we know, I mean, we're using it, you're right, we don't have a crystal ball. It could be more, it could be less. But at the end of the day, we know that we're taking 26 additional students, and is it irrational basis to say, none of them, given our historical access and given this year as well, can we not anticipate any additional revenue from that? I would say we should be able to anticipate some of that.
When you're, this is, you're, you're saying that the charges paid by Bridgeport for the students is additional revenue. But in theory, I'd like Mr. Mancusi to confirm, we're billing for exactly what we are spending, correct?
Yeah, but we have it in our budget book, it's a source of revenue.
Well, any money that comes in, right? So, but it's still expended. So it's not, I, I'd like to know the clarification, because I don't see this as revenue if it's actually being spent. It's an offset. In a budget, you have an offset.
Hi, Rob Mancusi, Executive Director of Special Education and Special Programs. Hi, Rob Mancusi, Executive Director of Special Education and Special Programs. I think, I think I understand what Mrs. Jacobson is figuring out here. What we do when we get students from Bridgeport with IEPs, we bill them above the $3,000 cutoff, the cost of the services that they have on their IEP. And that is every service, the cost of what it costs us to deliver that service minus the $3,000 per student, and that's what the cost is that we bill. The 14 students, I think you divided that by 159,568 to get what an average cost is per student for that year. If we get 26 more students, that's about five more students if we go with the 20% of what we would expect to be special ed students. It is not an exact science, but it is, it's, it is an estimate that I do understand how you got the math.
Can you clarify with that estimate on the financial statement? Does that show on both sides, whereas it shows on the revenue side and an equal amount on the expenditure side? Or is there a discrepancy which would lead to excess revenue?
I'm going to bounce that question to Mrs. Munsell.
Because I do have a fundamental issue here with the concept that we're billing for more than we're paying. I think we're going to have a problem if we sit here and say that we're billing Bridgeport for $10, but we're only costing us eight. It opens the door for, for an issue, and I don't think that's happening.
Right, well, so I'm just taking it from the budget book in terms of it being a revenue line item.
We show it as a, we show it as revenue, but we do not count on that in the budget. In other words, we do not reduce our budget by that amount because we cannot count on that money.
We don't count on it as a revenue.
Correct, we don't reduce our expenses by that amount.
No, Ms. Munsell, I think, to clarify, you show the 3,000 per student in the budget book as a revenue. We do not project the additional over 3,000 per child that needs it billed to Bridgeport, do we?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
We project it, but we do not budget for it. We, we budget for the, whatever the anticipated open choice state grant is. We, we budget expenses to that source of revenue. We do not do that for special ed, open choice revenue.
When we get our quarterly reports and then our financial statements, though, do they balance out?
We do show it as a revenue, but we, I don't know how else to explain it.
I understand what you're saying. I appreciate what you're saying. You're saying you don't want to attribute that to another allocation other than that specific purpose, because that's what we have to use it for. Correct? It's to pay what we've, the services that we've provided.
We already have budgeted for the, for the staff, and, and we already, we already budgeted for the staff. If there's an additional... If there's an additional expense that is not budgeted, then it would pay for it. It would be a wash.
Okay, I understand. If you're not comfortable with it, I totally understand. It's just, in our budget book, we do show it as a revenue, so that's where I was going with.
Well, because it is money coming in.
Right. But to Mr. Asa's point, you're keeping that for the services that we provided.
It's not, it's not a profit center.
No, no, of course not.
That's my point. We can't make money off it. So technically, in the end, it follows a trail to where it originated from.
But my point is, is that our current budget book does not have that in it right now. And we're taking in 26 more students without adjusting for that on this chart, the five scenarios.
We're not adjusting for any potential expenses or any potential income to offset that expense because we don't, that's done when we'll get the students and whether or not we have that need.
We're projecting another four, or another 26 students in revenue at $3,000 per.
Yes.
To offset the cut. But we didn't put in additional revenue for the sped.
Right, it's going out the door. Because we would only be getting revenue for the sped if we were, had an expense for the sped.
But the $3,000 for the 100 students is reflected in the $78,000 in additional.
Mr. Peterson has his hand up.
Yeah, I just want to say that I understand where Ms. Jacobson is coming from, but if we follow her logic with this, and I think other people have made this point, that we can't look at the 78,000 as a 78,000. Because what you're saying is, the odds are, we may get five students next year out of 26 that may need special services at 11.4 per, which would reduce that 78,000 number by 57,000 and only leave 21,000. So on the, on the one hand, you're saying you want to use the projected additional revenue from 20, you know, from, from that year, but the amount that we're taking in is going to be $57,000.
I wasn't using the entirety of that, correct.
All right, so, okay. I understand what you're saying.
Mrs. Munsell's uncomfortable with that, I understand that. You know, I mean, you have to, you have to do the net, right? I mean, so, go ahead.
78,000 has nothing to do with the special ed revenue. The 78,000, as long as we get those students, we, we count on that revenue and we reduce our expenses. That's why it's a budget adjustment. But we do not do that same thing with the special ed revenue because it is so volatile.
Ms. Gernsy, did you have, you, I believe you were the second to this motion? Oh, no. I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, I wanted to hear more discussion about it. And I'm interested in, I mean, I'm interested in this idea of supporting both programs, so thank you for that exploration.
Any other questions about the amendment to the amendment? Seeing none, could we take it for a vote? We're voting on the amendment to the amendment. All in favor? All opposed? Ms. Rotelli, Ms. Pitco, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Vitale, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Maxicanelli, Mr. Peterson, Ms. Gernsy, abstentions? Ms. Jacobson? Is that, I'm not even sure if you're not allowed to vote for your own motion. I think that that might not be in order, but, um. Yeah.
I can vote for all new amendment.
We already voted. Okay, back to Mr. Asa's amendment to the main motion, scenario five. Any more discussion on this? Seeing none, ticket to vote on amending the main motion to reflect the Board of Education approve budget adjustment five. All in favor?
Sorry, I just wanted to see if there was any other amendments to that before we voted.
Mrs. Maxicanelli?
I don't have an amendment. I just want to throw out there that the one other source of revenue, obviously, that's sitting out here that we could look at would be increasing the open choice number. So that if people, if right now voiced an interest in that, I would craft that amendment. If there is no interest, I won't use up the board's time on that. But that is an easily mathematically calculable number that we could arrive at.
Thank you, Mrs. Maxicanelli. Ms. Gernsy?
I would be very interested in exploring that, that suggestion.
Okay, so we, Ms. Maxicanelli, she will craft something then on that. We can go vote on scenario five and then go back to the main motion. All in favor of approving the budget adjustment according to scenario five? All in favor? Ms. Rotelli, Ms. Pitco, Mr. Asa, Mr. Peterson, all opposed? Ms. Jacobson, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Maxicanelli, Ms. Gernsy. Motion fails 5-4. Back to the main motion. Mrs. Maxicanelli?
Just in the interest of math, now, granted, I did that quickly, so obviously, I'm assuming I did something wrong. But I believe 32 students at 3,000 each would get us the art teacher. But then, of course, I couldn't help but look at five more students and we'd tap into the 6,000. And I'm not, if there's no interest in that, again, obviously, I had expressed interest in that two weeks ago. I'm not sensing, as I watch people's heads go down and hands to the forehead, I'm not sensing this is something people want to open as a debate. But I, I appreciate the notion of trying to have both. I don't reject the value of art. I'm obviously fervently in favor of the accessing of the proper math curriculum for these 41 students to the greatest degree possible. But that would be, so 32 open choice, 37 to get us to the 440,000. And heck, we could have five math academies. No, kidding.
We could offer busting for the math academy.
So, what is the motion? What is your, what? I wasn't making a motion, I was adding to the conversation. So if there's no interest, I'm not looking to go there. But, or maybe the only way to gauge the interest is to make the motion, so.
I think that you should probably put the motion on the table.
So how I got the numbers, I took the 95, 879 that was calculated for the art, divided by 3,000, and that. Okay, here would be my motion. My motion would be to go with scenario two. And I won't make the argument, but my motion would be for scenario two and recalculating that 95, 879. And so I guess that would be reducing it from the line item 15, additional sped tuition funding, to reconcile the math. That.
We put the motion on the table to. You said that. So to, that the Board of Education approve scenario two with the adjustment of line 15 being, Mr. Asa, the number for line 15 again? 271, 21. 271, 21. Line 17, 95, 875. 879. Can I have a, Ms. Maxicanelli, can I have a second? Ms. Gernsy, it is before the board for discussion.
I'd like to just, I don't think I need to make any other discussion. The board is either interested or not. I would only like to, in case the board did not hear the offhand comment Mrs. Vitale made, which I would totally be in favor of possibly. But again, not going to get into the math of this, sorry, but not going to get into the math of this if there's no interest. But that idea of that, that line 15 could be further reduced with a nod towards possibly working transportation into this math camp. I'm just offering that out there. First of all, that would take the whole elitist argument off the table for everybody, which I would love to do, but my interest is the math academy. This was a way to bring both in and to have the conversation of do we want this increased revenue source, period?
So this is before the board about increasing open choice students to increase the revenue. Ms. Jacobson, give your hand up.
So the reason why I'm not in favor of scenario two is that we end up kicking our special ed threshold up to $6,000, which we know then will recall cause a reduction in that, and also building in a $330,000 cliff that has not been discussed for next year, even though I did ask for a two-year net on scenario two. These are, these are not just like one-off, simple things. They have going forward costs to them. So we're talking about putting art back in, but we're building in a cliff for a one-time 6,000 gain that's not going to sustain itself going forward. Now, I wish that policy would be fixed, you know, ideally. But that's my issue with that scenario. But my comment prior to this motion was, if we are now in a place that we would like to save both for next year, then let's just have the conversation about where we can find 48 grand in order to do that.
I have to just say that I'm really uncomfortable with us sitting at the table and just picking numbers out of a hat. I mean, we criticized this, this type of behavior during the budget process, and here we are doing it again without giving staff, really, any heads up. But, you know, I respect, you know, this is the board's discussion, but we have scenarios before us, we have the superintendent's recommendation. We went through, you know, discussing the budget at length in January about where we could see reductions. Couldn't come to agreement then. So I would really just caution going down that road right now. I know that I would not be really in favor of voting for anything that right now is just being suggested at the table without any vetting, without, without any vetting of it, really. It just seems a little bit rash. But that is me. I, this conversation is back to the board. Thank you for that moment of privilege to express that opinion. So any other discussion on Ms. Maxicanelli's motion? Ms. Gernsy?
I'll be voting for scenario two with those adjustments or amendments. It checks all the boxes for me. I'd love to see both those programs added in, and I'm a big supporter of open choice, so I think it's a win for all three categories. And it's worth considering, so thank you.
Ms. Maxicanelli?
I'm not going to advance the argument, I think we've already had it. The only thing I would be interested in hearing from anyone who's planning to vote against it, is it an objection to the open choice? Or is it an objection to the very important point Mrs. Jacobson raised, which is that of creating the cliff, cliff by virtue of restoring this art and that funding, which obviously will drop off after a year? And that's only, I'm not looking to argue with anyone, I'm just, that obviously is already impacting next year's budget discussion. So I'm just curious about the nature of anyone's objection.
Would anybody like to share that information from Ms. Maxicanelli? Mrs. Gerber?
Yes, I can't support this because I am concerned about putting ourselves in a hole or a cliff or whatever you want to call the next year's budget.
I originally was supporting increasing open choice students, but after the conversations over the last two weeks that we've had about it, I don't, I have concerns about the board's support. And I think that if we're going to move this forward, there really needs to be stronger support for increasing these students. Right now, I am in support of scenario one. But I appreciate, Mrs. Maxicanelli, the effort of moving this forward. Any other comments? Take it for vote? All in favor? Ms. Gernsy, Ms. Maxicanelli, all opposed? Ms. Rotelli, Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Pitco, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Vitale, Mr. Asa, Mr. Peterson? Motion fails 8-2. 2-8. I, you know. Okay, we are back to the main motion. Any other comments or discussion before we go, before we vote? All right, we will take it to the vote. That the Board of Education approved the superintendent's recommended 2021, 2022 budget adjustments as enclosed. All in favor? Ms. Jacobson, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Vitale, Mrs. Maxicanelli, Ms. Gernsy, all opposed? Ms. Rotelli, Ms. Pitco, Mr. Asa, Mr. Peterson? Okay, moving on to 2021, 2022 board goal discussion. I put this on the agenda tonight just because the board has not approved a goal in a number of years. The last goal was approved in 2018, October 9, 2018. Ms. Rotelli, I don't think was on the board yet. Ms. Gernsy was on, was not on the board yet. Mr. Dwyer was still the chair, Mr. Cummings was not the superintendent. And we've just gone through, you know, a global pandemic. So a lot of things have, have changed, maybe some new priorities. And I wanted to give the board an opportunity to, you know, think what we want to do next year. What are priorities for you? Hopefully, we will be refocusing and COVID won't be, you know, taking up so much energy and thought. And of course, we have the district's improvement plan. But this goal is more for the board, not necessarily for the school district, but what we as a board, do you think that we need to focus on? Something that's important to you, something you think that we can do better? And just putting it out there. For our last board discussion, we kind of brainstormed, we made a master list of ideas and then put it out there for, you know, to survey it and kind of broke it down to come to one. So starting the process now, so we maybe get a head start on next year. Ms. Pitco?
I'm hoping to revisit one of the goals of looking at the ECC, the two locations and how they've already outgrown their space, projecting for the future. I'm not interested in looking at redistrict for the next school year. I feel our kids have been through enough. But I do think that we do need to talk to the town about all of these developments now that have gone into the town and how that may be changing our future enrollment projections. I know in the last week, a number of developments were proposed.
Thank you, Ms. Pitco. And I agree, and part of the reason, you know, with the whole Malone and McBroom study, I think it's important that we, you know, relook at that. There's been a lot of, in addition to the new developments, just the real estate market has changed. And it'd be interesting to see how that might change some of our projections.
A quick question, I believe, Mr. Cummings, don't the enrollment projections come out in November?
Sorry. We, that's true. About the end of October, if they turn them around quickly enough because they're based on the October 1 census.
Okay, thanks.
And I'm just going to read the last board goal that was approved just as a point of context. That the Board of Education will explore and research to make a decision on or before June 30. on or before June 30th, 2019, with BOE action on all four of the following items. Implementing an intra-district magnet or other program, relocation or renovation of Walter Fitzgerald campus, approach to early childhood, early childhood center overcrowding, and the desired comprehensive redistricting model to be utilized to resolve overcrowding and racial imbalance. You know, obviously, you know, we still have the racial imbalance that we do need to focus on. There is still the concern about the ECC. There's still concern about our facilities, but I didn't want to necessarily just take this goal and carry it forward for next year without bringing it to the board and to Superintendent Cummings for, for discussion. I'm not looking to put anybody on the spot right now, but I'm just kind of starting the conversation here. Mr. Peterson.
Thank you, and I very much appreciate you putting this on. You know, it's, it's time we started looking ahead. You know, we've been, we've been in pandemic hell for a very long time now. I know it's, you know, 10 times worse for my Cummings and the administration and the staff, but, you know, a lot of these are laudable goals on, on our old board goal list, and I'm very much looking forward to getting back onto them. You know, I, I still believe that we need a comprehensive redistricting, and we obviously may need to look at that again from a projection standpoint, as, as Ms. Pitco alluded to. I understand it's a multi-year process, but I see no harm in beginning it soon, just to make sure that we have as much runway as we can, you know, build in research time, get feedback from the public and staff. So I, I just, I would put that on top of the list. I've, I've been for that for all my four years on this board.
Ms. Jacobson.
I had two things for my board goal idea, and that was, number one, of course, is to assess and address the needs coming out of this pandemic and how we're going to be utilizing the federal and state funds that were allocated to meet the needs of our students and facilities. That alone would be a lofty goal. And as I started to think about it, and thank you, yes, I agree for putting this on the agenda, I started just writing down, we have so many different plans between the racial imbalance plan, the legacy district improvement plan, the interim district improvement plan, the waterfall, the maintenance list one, two, three, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, our long-range goal, our academic goals, our social and civic, none of these things, and I brought this up during the budget season, we're embarking on the SEL, Needs Assessment and Evaluation. The second piece was at the end, by June 30th, 2021, we will have rolled up our sleeves and put all of this on the table to organize, evaluate, and update as necessary, so that we have one, one Fairfield master plan.
By June of 2021?
Sorry, 2022. 2022. I mean, we have a long-range goal in policy that was adopted in 2014, and I don't know if we've met that goal. We have talked about needing to talk about the waterfall. We now know that we're going to probably need to update the racial imbalance plan. There's so many things that are behind us, and to Mr. Peterson's point, to move forward, we have to know where we are. And in order to do that, we have to go through all of these things that are legacy and that we already have in order to move forward and flow with the district improvement plan process that Mr. Cummings has already aligned. I think that we sometimes talk about things in silo. We talk about this in November, we talk about this in January, we talk about this in April, and we talk about this in June. But we need to make sure that all of these things talk to each other. And are, and flow together as one, so that when we get to a budget season, there isn't a, well, well, let's not fund that, because we've already had that talk. We've already done that. So in order to move forward this year between the pandemic is to update, eliminate, it can be eliminated. It could be eliminating things. It could be identifying that which is working really well and we need to do more of. Evaluation. Evaluation of what's working and what is effective and what is not in order to move forward from there. So that is my, that is my idea for this year.
I take that more as, I agree with you, more of a goal for the district, as opposed for a lot of that work would fall on staff in terms of assessing, you know, the S R two. How program evaluation, like that's not work necessarily that we're going to be doing. I'm thinking more of the board goal for like work that we can be doing. We've, we've talked about advocating more at state and national level, being more potentially proactive. Is that something that we might want to get more involved in? You know, being more prepared, not more prepared, for our meetings. Can we run our meetings differently? We talked about potentially having a special meeting to talk about, you know, how we can be more inclusive. Do we want to have a goal that we set time aside to have those dedicated discussions? Ms. Guernsey.
I have a specific goal in mind in terms of discussion. I would be really interested in having this board come together and hearing about what kind of commitment we might be able to make as a board to the equity work that's needed in this, in this district. I know it's a really difficult conversation, but I think it's a really important one, and I'd love to see that happen sometime next year.
Thank you, Ms. Guernsey, and I support that as well. That would be something that I think that we, you know, need to discuss and tackle, and it is hard discussions and difficult discussions, and might, it might be something, a workshop that we need help or some guidance on that in discussing some of these issues surrounding equity. Mr. Peterson. Ms. Maxine Connolly.
I am, most of my comments, I think, all funnel back to the district improvement plan. So that really took most of mine, except for one, and I wasn't sure if this was the time to bring it up, or if during the reopening debate during the superintendent's update was, but you talk about communication with, you know, federal and state officials. I also think that our communication with our local boards is a possible area of improvement, but I have one very targeted topic that would be a one-year goal, and that would be a, and again, I haven't well thought this out, and as, I wasn't even sure this was the area where I should be bringing it up, but as the district is getting 2.8 million ballpark to spend on our COVID relief and, and for, you know, addressing learning loss, et cetera, the town is getting $25 million. And, and I will fully confess that I don't listen to all, most of the Board of Selectmen meetings. I rely on reading minutes or what have you, but I would be very interested in the board having conversations with the Board of Selectmen, with the First Selectwoman's Office on, obviously that they are interested in probably some tax relief. I definitely recognize that the town would be interested in infrastructure investment going forward. I definitely, you know, they've already had that conversation independent of this money, but an investment in our town buildings, I think would be an extremely worthwhile conversation, in particular regarding the mechanical means of fresh air and HVAC, that that $25 million coming in could, and again, these are town buildings that are school buildings for 10 months of the year, but get tremendous use and could be of tremendous service to the entire community. And I just would be interested in, and I'm not positive how to set that up, you know, is it that we appoint a liaison, but that communication of how is that $25 million being used and could consideration be given to our schools as town buildings as possibly being in the conversation for having that being addressed?
Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Pitco.
I wanted to state something on the positive, especially somebody who's watching for the very first time. We did meet one of our four goals. The Walter Fitzgerald campus moved to new property, which was formerly the Giant Steps. So we did something.
Indeed, we did, and that was collaboration for all town bodies, and I appreciate the support for that, and, you know, exciting for that program for next year for those kids, and possibly to build the Early Literacy Academy in the future there. Anybody else? Again, just brainstorming. All right, seeing none, I would just ask that you email me, just so I can start a list of, you know, I noted those goals that were shared today, but just email me your suggestions, and we'll start getting a list going to further this discussion, and I appreciate, you know, your sharing your ideas tonight, and apologize for somewhat putting you on the spot, but, you know, did want to try to move us forward, you know, past the pandemic a little bit. Yes, Mrs. Maxine Connolly?
I just want to remind, and this is of course especially to Mr. Rotelli and Mrs. Guernsey, who were not part of this last time, but one of the issues that happened last time when we were trying to craft these board goals, and I asked people to go back to the drawing board on them, and that's the idea of smart language, and that idea of being specific, that it has measurable, that it has, you know, a time deadline on it, you know, the board goals to me should not be just some vague out in the ether sort of thing, and to the, as much as possible to have language crafted with, once given some thought, I think is very helpful for our discussion.
Thank you, Mrs. Maxine Connolly. Excellent suggestion. I appreciate that. All right, seeing none, we're moving on to approval of minutes. That the Board of Education approved the May 11, 2021 regular meeting minutes. Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Ms. Pitco, all in favor? Motion, motion carries nine-zero. Superintendent?
Okay, thank you. I've got a few things. I know on the agenda, it talks about reopening update and the district improvement plan update. So let me get, start there, and then I want to talk about a couple of the topics. On the, on the reopening, essentially, as we're communicating out, we were informed that we can double from two to four attendance at the grade five and grade eight moving up ceremonies, graduations. So we're going to be communicating that out to families. If that didn't happen today, it'll be going out tomorrow. And that, that is again, an outdoor number. So as you've seen, and if you've been communicating with the schools, we have multiple rain dates for our fifth and eighth grade ceremonies. And not, we only have one rain day for the high school, so, and they'd have to share it, but at this point, that's where we are, and so we're working on that. We did receive, or we're continuing to receive guidance. This bleeds a little bit into the ARP update, but we're basically been told by the state that for summer programming, the mask guidance that we have now will be the mask guidance through the summer, so masks continue to be required in school settings and outside. Masks are not required unless students are kind of on top of each other. It occurred to me today that it's kind of like the duck, duck, goose setup, right? If they're all sitting around in a circle, they really should be masked. If they're running around, they don't need to be. So that's kind of, that's essentially how we're trying to work on it with staff. I will point out, just reminded me, I will point out that at the fifth and eighth grade ceremonies, the students themselves, because they will be separated on the fields, will not be masked. When they get in line, you know, to receive diploma, they would, they would then mask up. They could unmask crossing the stage for photos, and then they, when they go back to their seats. So it's really, that's the only time. And again, the town emphasizes again and again that adults or really anybody who is not vaccinated, fully vaccinated, should be masked when attending these things, whether outside or not. Related to that, we are beginning to put together the, I'm sorry, this name is not yet tripping off my tongue, the Safe Return to In-Person Instruction Plan. I started a draft of that over the weekend. Ms. Clark has it right now to take a look at. Essentially, it's, it's a comp, it's a short compilation at this point of the reopening plan. The state has been very clear to us all that a lot of the material that's in the reopening plan, the expectations of the reopening plan, going back to last summer, are really the expectations for the return, the safe return plan, the contingency plan, or the continuity of instruction plan, excuse me. So, and I was made aware of what Greenwich has sent out, thank you, and so we're going to be looking at that, but we will be getting a draft of that out. We'll be putting it online to collect feedback from our stakeholders and from, from families on that, but it's going to be as simple as possible as it, as it should be. And, and the, the caveat we're all living with is this is what we think now, and things could change, right? They could get better, and hopefully, that's all that will happen, and they'll just continue to get better. So that's, I think, about it for the reopening right now. Let me talk about district improvement plan. We have our first meeting of the steering committee scheduled for Tuesday, June 2nd. We're going to meet only for an hour, just to introduce people. What I'm working on right now is people get, many people have recommitted to the, to the steering committee. Not everybody could, but many people did recommit to it. We also are trying to broaden our representation on that committee, and that will probably be an ongoing process as we get going. We also have a second meeting scheduled for June 15th, so we're going to get, try to get two meetings in before the end of the school year. One of the things that we're going to look at, and I can share this with the board, but when we gave the district improvement update, back in March, I believe it was, Ms. Jacobson asked that we take a look at the last few years of district improvement plans and kind of inventory, what had been accomplished and what had not been accomplished, and it's a very telling document. And I was reflecting on it again as the board was talking about its goals. It's going to be, and I'm going to share this, not on the June 1st meeting, but on first meeting, but on the June 15th meeting with the steering committee. It's a very telling document in what it talks about trying to do too much, right? And so I think one of the things that we have to keep in mind as we go forward over the next five-year plan is really keeping it simple and focused. You know, another way of looking at it to my mind is being ambitious but tight, because when multiple initiatives happen, you can, you can kind of go back as you look through this, and I will share it with everybody. In fact, maybe you can put it on the June 8th agenda. You can see where a good idea kind of just fell away. Now, the last year and a half, there's whole accounting for what happened to that, but even prior to that, you know, things just got lost, and a lot of it changed because administrators changed, not only at the district, but at the school level, board changed, so priorities shifted as people shifted, I think, a lot of it, or as things that we didn't anticipate came up and they took over. So one of the tasks, the first task of the steering committee work will be to establish some of these guiding principles that we have to build as we actually build the plan. But again, we're going to be meeting twice in June, and our goal over the summer would be to begin to conduct surveys of, of our families, community members, and I'm hoping that we can even begin to bring people in and have, start to have some focus group conversations. So that'll be kind of the work over the summer for the district improvement plan. Before I go any further, I don't know if there's any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Cummings? Ms. Guernsey?
I just have one really quick question regarding the reopening, or I'm sorry, yeah, just the update. I, we had spoken briefly about revisiting the use of plastic barriers in the lunchroom, and given that I heard recently the CDC guidance for schools had changed for that, is that something that you're able to revisit and possibly implement before the end of the year?
We revisited it with the DPH a week ago, and the DPH still sits on the fence in their use. So I think one of our concerns right now is not changing any of the practices because, again, trying to keep transmission out of the buildings altogether, but, you know, I did, I did run that by our health department at the DPH, and right now, we're holding on it, but we'll see. We'll see.
Ms. Jacobson.
To have a follow-up on that, I had noticed, and I don't know if everyone else, you know, read the S R two application that we got, and I had noticed also that we had put some money towards additional, buying additional barriers, and I just wanted to know, is that for like, per se, remote students maybe coming back that we don't have them for now, or just what was the rationale in buying more of them?
Well, I think that's a precautionary measure. We may not actually purchase those.
Oh, okay. All right. I just wanted to get clarity on that. Thank you so much as a follow-up thing.
Ms. Maxine Connolly.
Also with a follow-up, I just want to explicitly clarify that the Fairfield Board of Health, Mr. Cleary, would not be in favor of our lifting this. Is that correct? Is that correct?
Lifting the barriers?
The, the, the current practice of having these barriers.
It's, really, the DPH is saying, they're literally sitting on, well, I shouldn't say literally sitting on the fence, metaphorically sitting on the fence. Well, you know, there's no evidence they really work, there's no evidence they really don't work, and if you're using them, you should kind of keep using them, type of thing. So, um, you know, I, I don't know how, that's kind of where we are with them right now.
Because, because to me, that is very different from, I mean, the mask is a mandate. You know, that's an executive order. We don't have a choice about that. Um, or, excuse me, we, it would be ill-advised to run counter to that executive order. But if they are in fact fence-sitting, then that does become local discretion. Is that correct?
That's not how we're interpreting it at this point. They, you know, what the, what the state talks about is this, this suite of mitigation strategies. So it goes back to conversations we had in March when we reopened. When we bring kids together, and they're at lunch, and they're three feet apart, and they're unmasked, and they're eating, and they're unmasked when they're talking, anything you can possibly do at that moment to reduce transmission, you should do. And really, you don't have anything, because we are, yeah, that's Swiss cheese, yes. So we're working off that, because we're at that three feet minimum already, the only thing we really have is the barriers.
Ms. Asa?
Um, I just think, piggybacking on Mrs. Maxine Canelli, um, I think it's time for us to push them off that fence. We toured the schools, and to me, um, the barriers are there, but from what I saw, I don't necessarily think they're doing anything. Um, and that's no disrespect to the administrators at the school or anything, it is human nature. And the kids are turning and talking and everything, and we talk about the DPH being on the fence, and I respect that, but I think it's time that us and other districts start pushing them, and pushing back on them to come out and definitively say, "You need these," or "It's your choice." And when it becomes our choice, then I think we need to use common sense here, um, and I think they've, I personally think we're a little, um, overdoing it with them.
Mr. Tally?
Yeah, I'd like to agree with Mr. Asa there. At some point, um, especially for these barriers, we really have no scientific data that they're useful. We did tour. If I had to take a guess, just from what I saw, I wouldn't say they were really doing anything, other than probably giving our custodians a headache, um, by trying to clean them all the time. And I think at some point, we do need to use common sense and remove these types of things and move forward. We're looking at our numbers, we're in the gray. We, you know, the cases are extremely down. It's time that we could start lifting this.
Mr. Peterson?
And just in, in favor of that, to that discussion, I would add, if I'm not mistaken, uh, June 4th is the, is the date that the 12 to 15-year-olds that started to receive their vaccinations, our Pfizer vaccinations, will be able to get their second dose. So we, we have hundreds of kids in the 12 to 15 and, well, 12 to 18 age range that have been vaccinated at least with, with one, with one shot, uh, which I certainly believe can play into our decision-making at both the middle and high school levels about the barriers.
Mr. Peterson, I only question you on the number of, I don't know how successful we've been with vaccination. That's, that's just my concern.
No, I'm, and I'm not saying that we're tracking that in any way, I, but the, the hundreds of children in the 12 to 15 age range were vaccinated at the Fairfield Health Department alone, if I'm not mistaken. So this is, I'm just saying that the population is more vaccinated and more protected now than it was in March when we came back full-time.
Any other questions? I have one, and I'm sorry to surprise you with this, and you may not have an answer, but just, um, we, earlier in the year with the heat, is there any sort of thought that if it reaches a certain temperature in the school's early dismissal, or not there yet?
No, it, that's definitely on our minds. It's just something, we've had some preliminary conversation about, I mean, well, you know, we do get the weather, uh, we continue to get the weather updates, we're watching the heat indexes. Um, last Wednesday, fortunately, the humidity was relatively low. Uh, tomorrow, again, looks like it's going to be the hottest day of the week, not as hot as it was last Wednesday, as initially projected anyway, so I think it's just one of those things we're going to have to keep an eye on. But, but, uh, but an early dismissal on a, um, an oppressively warm day, and we'll, and again, we'll use the heat index, when it, you know, my understanding of this is it gets up around 65, that's just something we have to, we have to monitor, and we could wind up with an early dismissal. And again, um, we would try to do it in such a way that we would notify parents the night before that we were going to do that.
Thank you. I just had some questions, and I just want to put it out there for the public, this is something that, so people aren't surprised if it should happen, and we were fortunate last fall that we really didn't have a lot of those really hot days, that we weren't dealing with it. And hopefully, you know, the next month or so will not be, you know, oppressively hot, but it is something that you are considering. Ms. Jacobson?
Just a follow-up to that, is that building-based, not level-based?
No, it would probably be, um, it would probably be, uh, level-based, um, because of the, um, issues around families and transportation, things like that, yeah.
Each school has its own set of buses.
Yeah. Well, you said it. The, the tiers are the issue, and then the interconnections of the buses. So that, that becomes our problem.
Oh, you mean because, but, because of middle school and high school?
Correct.
Okay. Back to you.
Just wondering if Mr., um, if Mr. Mankusi can come up and just give an update on the Literacy Academy? I've told Mr. Mankusi that we cannot call it the Early Literacy Academy and abbreviate it to ELA, since we already have an ELA. Literacy Academy, of course, is LA, which is really no better, so we're going to work on a name.
Okay. We're going to, we're going to work on, we're going to work on a name for the Early Literacy Academy.
Board members are invited to send Mr. Mankusi a suggestion?
Submit, uh, submit, uh, your recommendations. Um, we've been doing a lot of work on, on the Early Literacy Academy, getting it up and running. We have a teacher now, her name is Erica Mueller.
Cohort of students, um, for the Early Literacy Academy, and we are, as we speak, reaching out and having conversations with parents if they want to opt into, to the Early Literacy Academy, which is going to be located at McKinley School. And we've also had a planning meeting with Margie Gillis and Teresa Ginggrave, the principal at McKinley, as well as Zoe Dolan, myself, and Eric Mueller, the special ed teacher. We're going to be having a follow-up with Margie in a couple of weeks, um, and, uh, we're working on schedules, and, you know, we're doing a lot of work on getting this up and going.
Any questions for Mr. Mankusi? Thanks, Rob.
Thank you. Um, just real quick on the ARP grant, our SR3, uh, we did complete our assurances, that was the first part of the grant application process. I did that on the last Monday, Tuesday. Um, we didn't, then, this, yesterday got, um, the funding, the initial part of funding is now available to us to begin to encumber, um, but we've not assigned it to anything at this point. Uh, I already mentioned that we're working on the Safe Return to Person, In-Person Instruction Plan, which has to be posted, has to have feedback and then posted on the, on the district website, but I think it's June 23rd. And with the administrators, last Thursday, um, we began to draft a list of possibilities of things that we would like to potentially use the funds for. We're going to revisit that next week when we meet, the district leadership team meets for the last time for the year. Uh, just to get, start to essentially establish a preliminary list of possible funding issues. I will tell you that just a high-level look at that list, and we did it by level, so we did elementary, we did middle, and we did high, but there are commonalities across all that, there's a lot of emphasis on, um, addressing tutoring, intervention needs, and equity work. Those are the two, many great ideas, some of them very small, still needed, um, but those are the two kind of big themes that went through the year, uh, through the three The boost program, we're collecting names, uh, we sent out invitations to students, and we talked about this a little bit before, but just about student availability. So there's roughly 300 invitations at, between K5 and 306,8. In K5, we have a total of, um, 173 students for the actual four-week program, and 65 students who are signing up for the tutoring program. So of the 300, we're up around 238, 24, 238, I think, is the number. So it's, it's high. In middle, it's not so high. Um, we have 19 students signed up for the four-week program and 13 signed up for the tutoring program. So we're at about 10% at the middle school program. And, um, so we're, we're going to continue, and we have a secondary list, we'll reach out to further students as we go along with this, but, uh, we did, we have, um, principals of both elementary and middle school program in place now, they are starting to work on the hiring process. So, um, that's in process right now. Oh, Dr. Parrish just texted me. I, it's not 300, she said. Oh, okay, thank you. There are only 100 middle school spots? Okay.
Zakiya Parrish, Executive Director of Operations and Processes. So yes, there are only 100 middle school spots, not 300.
So about 32%.
Correct.
Much better. Thank you. I don't know how I ever did this without people texting him throughout an entire meeting. And finally, the last thing I wanted to talk about, um, I don't know, let me stop, is there any questions on any of that?
Oh, yeah, I wanted to, I wanted to ask, I mean, obviously, we're staffing these programs, if it, if the, if we don't get the participation from students, is there potentially going to be money left over that we'll be able to allocate for something else?
That's correct. The, um, in, in all of these grants, um, if you don't spend it on what you initially thought, you can reallocate, and again, really with the provision being that it has to be spent out by the end of that, that particular grant period.
Right, and it, this is like four years for this one, right?
Not this one, I think this one goes through 2023.
Correct, this is a two-year grant.
Okay, but plenty of time.
Agreed, yep.
Okay, uh, Ms. Jacobson?
Um, have you thought about how we're going to be making the input available for the public? And I know we have a short window to get that input on, is it going to be just like a form on the website? Are we going to have a town hall? Just what are you thinking about that?
Um, we've had some discussion about having a town hall. And I think that's one way to do it. I think that we also, again, going back to these focus groups and things like that, we have to find multiple ways, as well as an online.
Yeah, we did discuss having a town hall and just trying to logistics around it. Um, as Mr. Cummings said, really trying to provide some variability just for people to access in different formats, because as we know from past town halls, not everybody comes, or, so want to get as much stakeholder input as we possibly can.
Okay, I have one more thing. Um, I just wanted to briefly touch on the, um, the student walkouts yesterday. Um, you know, I attended Ludlow, we had administrators at, at Fairfield Ward, Ms. Vitale was with me over at Fairfield-Ludlow. I think it was, you know, the capturing and, um, of student voice is just so critical to our work as a school system in improvement. And what I heard yesterday, these are really just my own personal reflections on this, was, um, a lot of sharing of personal stories. The line at Ludlow just continued to grow as more, as the students spoke, then, for every student who spoke, I think three or four students got online to speak again. So there, it was really provocative in a sense, in the best sense of that word, that they, there was a lot of thinking, and kids were sharing personal stories. I took away from that a couple of things. One that I just want to address, and I, the board, board members know this, but there were several people calling for us, and continue to call for us, the school system, to, to talk about the details of, of what happens when somebody transgresses, when somebody calls somebody out, um, uses a racial slur, does whatever they do. And, and as the board members know, there, we are not, we cannot share that information. Um, and this is a continual source of education for, obviously, not just our students, but for adults in the community at large as well, that we're bound by privacy laws to keep those, that information private. What I also heard was very clearly, um, an impatience with the district, and with the town, society in general, for, that these things keep happening. And in some ways, they almost seem to be getting worse. And there's, I recognize that, that's not just the impatience of youth. I hope it's not just the impatience of youth, I think it's the impatience of many of us. Um, I, I, I'm tired of, of writing that, um, not tired of writing it, but I feel like so inadequate every time we say that we're not going to tolerate this, and, um, because it just seems that we're saying, using the same words over and over again. We don't have really much left. But I, I wanted to give the board and the public an update on where we are. The, as board members, I believe, know, we are working on a steering committee that's composed of, um, our administration, Ms. Maxine Canelli is on that steering committee, we have representatives from FEA, the teachers' union, and the president of the Fairfield Equity Coalition is also on that steering committee. And really, what this steering committee is out, is tasked with doing is identifying the priorities of the work that all of these groups will engage in, either individually or collectively. So we are in the process now of setting goals. So those goals are centering around things like addressing the hiring practices, professional learning, unbiased and equity, which is really going to be the task of our work with the staff next year, beginning a curriculum review process and reviewing our discipline data to see where we are, um, over-identifying students of color. If we are over-identifying students of color, and what are the consequences, the consequence is different for students of color. So that's just, that's the information the state provides us, and it's something that we have to look at further. Um, you know, we know that it took years, centuries for us to get to this place, and it's going to take some time to change that culture. Um, and I, and I think one of the things that we, we can't measure our progress against the number of incidents, that's not a marker, because the incidents are going to continue. Um, and in fact, in fact, um, if we look at society as large, the incidents will probably grow worse before they get better. But I think we have to look for the dialogue that started, the courage of people to come out and speak, and those actions, you know, I, I left Ludlow yesterday very positive about what listening to our kids and having our, our students take lead on this will accomplish for us. So, um, we, we have to support them, and there's real clear work we have to do. I don't think that you'll, we're going to wait for the next iteration of the district improvement plan to lay that out, that'll be in part of our next year's interim plan. But I will tell you that it's a, one of our, one of our, we essentially are going to have two primary focuses next year. One is restoring our community after being apart for the last year and a half, and as part of that restoration is bringing kids and our students back into the fold and providing them the academic and social emotional supports they need to be successful. And connected to that, inherent in that is, is, is the goal around, um, addressing the equity and bias issues that we face, because they are, this is a, these nest within each other. Right? When we talk about an SRBI system that works, an intervention system that works, we have to make sure it's truly an inclusive system, um, and that we approach all kids with the belief that they have the ability to learn to the highest degree. So- So that is our work next year, and we'll be bringing forth plans when we convene in September with you, we'll be bringing those plans forward with more detail. And that's what I've got.
Ms. Pico?
We were talking about the summer plans. I have a quick question about ESY, and I don't know if it goes to you, Mr. Cummings, or to Mr. Mancusi. Wondering how quick that information is going to go out to the families with the schedules and everything, because I know there was a change now in service providers, and does that affect ESY?
We're working on ESY schedules. We've been working on ESY schedules for the past, since April vacation, so we're very cognizant of the fact that parents want their ESY schedules earlier than later. We've listened to the frustrations in the past, so I can't say when, but as soon as possible.
Any other questions? I just want to also just thank Mr. Cummings and Mr. Hatsis for allowing me to join yesterday. I concur with really what he said, hearing the personal stories really were, were very moving, and I left two hours in and the line just kept on growing. And I encourage you, if you can listen to any of the, any of the video that's been posted, just to hear what some of these, these students are saying. And my own personal feeling is that this board, you know, we, the Fairfield Public Schools is inclusive, no child should feel afraid to go to school, and I think that there is some work to be done in terms of social, emotional learning and mental health. Some of the things that I heard yesterday were, you know, heartbreaking, and I think that we can do better. And I look forward to, you know, having these discussions and doing this work, because I know that everyone is committed to just making our kids feel safe and welcome in our schools. So thank you for your leadership on this. And thank you, Mrs. Max and Cannelly, for serving, representing the board on this steering Committee liaison reports. Ms. Pico, and then Ms. Vitale.
So I have a report from CES, and I'm finally excited that I get to tell you that CES, in conjunction with Ed Advance, which is the RESC for Litchfield County, have purchased a property in Bethel. It is called Workspace Connecticut. It's, I'm going to read what this says. On behalf of Dr. Jeff Kitchen, Ed Advance Executive Director, and myself, Chip Dumey, I always say his last name wrong, I'm sorry. They're going to send an invitation to us to a ribbon-cutting ceremony and a look of the property for June 12th. The facility is already designed and equipped to support innovative and creative learning opportunities for students and adults of all ages, backgrounds, and interests. CES, which serves Fairfield County and Ed Advance, have purchased the property at 16 Tower Bridge Drive in Bethel, which was previously used for families who home-schooled their children. The five-acre site features a former factory that resembles a large red barn, offers 32,000 square feet of rooms, fully furnished with a wide variety of educational and purposes. Workspace Connecticut, ready-to-use spaces includes a theater with a stage, music and recording booths, woodworking shops, virtual reality suite, commercial kitchen, costume shop, makerspace, labs, multiple areas for studying, reading, and meeting. We'll be working with local community members and our regional partners to explore ways to use the space and provide a variety of initiatives to maximize student and adult learning. And more information is going to come, I'm going to send you this email, it wouldn't let me send from here, it has photos of the entire facility, and I believe it's June 12th is the.
Thank you. We've been waiting for the news, you've been hinting for weeks, so.
It's an amazing building, and it's very innovative. I'm looking forward to whatever alternative programming that they can offer to our students and other students within CES.
Ms. Vitale?
Join us for SEPTA tomorrow night, 7:30. Go to FairfieldSEPTA.org for the link, and I'll see you there.
Ms. Max and Cannelly?
Yeah, actually, I've got a number of things regarding policy. Just as a reminder to the board members is that we are talking about the grading policy and that it's, you know, very much a, still looking to receive ideas or observations that anyone has, that if needed, maybe needs to be passed along to staff, so that's one topic. But several things are going to be coming up in the next couple of weeks, and so I just want to put the board on notice that unfortunately, there's a decent chance that some of these are going to have to be one-and-dones at the end of June, that I'm not sure that we're going to be able to get all of the language ready at our next policy meeting, which is next Tuesday, and the one after that is June 14th. So some of these things may all be falling on that last June meeting. These include the immunization policy, which I don't think will be too controversial because it's just getting in line with the recent state statute. It is the school nutrition and physical activity policy, which has been updated and needs to be approved by the end of the month. So those are two big ones. We are also talking about the, what we're calling the COVID policies, the ones that are all set to expire at the end of June, and we're going to have a policy discussion, possibly advocating for moving those to, with a September deadline, so that, given what might happen over the summer, if we let them expire and then end up with whatever state action needing to bring them all back again, it might be easier to just hold them all, but again, we'll be having that discussion. And then finally, the other big items that we're hoping to get an update on, Booster Clubs, which has been now about a four-year project. So, so a lot going on in policy.
Anybody else? Okay, open board comment. Ms. Asa.
So all joking aside, we made budget adjustments tonight, we got a quarterly report. I would like to ask this board to support whatever we need to do, for the love of God, invest in some technology for our AV equipment here, and upgrade, and do whatever we have to do. I don't care what it costs. I understand Fair TV owns some of the equipment, but I would like this board to support Mr. Cummings to let Nancy Burns, or whoever it is, investigate, and so we can actually have a board meeting where the public can hear us, and it's just, it's a disgrace. I mean, we've gone this whole year, and we've had one hiccup after another. We have new cameras, we have new systems, they're not working, and we need to invest in something that works. So I ask my fellow board members to support this request, and we figure it out, but we fix it once and for all.
Mr. Asa, you might have been reading my mind, but just for the boards, I have reached out to Chief McCarthy about just opening up our meetings for some public participation to kind of just at least, you know, there would still be masking, we would still have to have some distancing, but we've been meeting in person, and hopefully that we can invite the public back in in some capacity. In terms of the technology, I, to Ms. Max and Cannelly's point about some of that state funding, I think this is more than a school district issue. I think investing in infrastructure, we're not the only people that use this room in term, you know, come September, when town boards are meeting in person again, that is something that I think the town maybe should, should be looking at and using some of that money in terms of bettering communication with the public. So thank you for that. And Ms. Max and Cannelly?
I'm not looking to turn this into a discussion item, but did you get any direction regarding opening our meetings to the public?
There's a meeting tomorrow, Mr. Papa George is going to be at. I think that, you know, the first request was that, from the first look woman, that town boards wait until the end of, until next September to start meeting in person again. Mr. Papa George, I expect that you will relay the message that we have been meeting in person since September, and that, you know, we are anxious to have the public back in some, some capacity. And also, if we talk about having a town hall, possibly having that in person, depending if we can find a large enough space, because the technology has definitely been a challenge this year. Yes? Yep.
And just a reminder to the board that we are going to be in person on June 8th at Fairfield Ward with the award ceremony for students. We have two years of CAPE and Superintendent Awards to take care of that night, so 6:30 starts. So that, that will be really our first meeting with the public for a great event, and then the board meeting would start at 7:30.
Okay, public comment, anyone who's still with us and wants to give comment, I ask you to please email us at the public comment email, or submit your comment through the form on the website. And with that, motion to adjourn. Ms. Jacobson, second to my, Ms. Pico, all in favor? Motion carries 9-0. Thank you.